All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our work session today. We are pleased to have a special recognition ceremony at the beginning of this work session. We would normally do this at a business meeting, but we know that next week that City Council is having its public hearing. They're going to make sure that we provide an opportunity for the board and the public to attend that. And so, we thought we would do a special recognition ceremony at the beginning of this meeting. So I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Boone and follow her flow.
Boone, good afternoon, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Talk about a proud time for Norfolk Public Schools. And yes, I've finally gotten my voice back since the championship game. I have to tell you, throughout our athletic season, I'm always so pleased around the sportsmanship and the performance of all of our athletes across all of our schools. And so, was so very proud to be able to take the journey with Norview and Lake Taylor High School, Norview's girls, Lake Taylor's girls and boys, as they progress toward the state championship. And so, as we went into the regional finals and semifinals and then on to state, I was able to take that journey fully with Lake Taylor's boys. And so proud of Coach Brown and his assistant coaches and the team, Principal Wade Jenkins and all who have supported Lake Taylor. So we're honored today to be able to celebrate their accomplishments as the Region Four State Basketball Championship. And we have a little bit of a brief video that we want to share with you to give you an idea of some of that journey, particularly toward the end. So we'll ask them to set the video.
In a seesaw battle that took two overtimes, Lake Taylor won their first ever boys' state basketball title, defeating John Hanley.
Thank God, thank God, I think my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. He kept us healthy, kept us focused, and he gave us the mindset to do the job. Great John Hanley team, it was nip and tuck, back to back. I think this might be one of the greater games that they've seen in the last 10 or so years.
Darian Sebron, who led the Titans with 24 points, sank one free throw with .4 seconds left in regulation to put the game into overtime. One OT couldn't settle it. But in the second, back-to-back three-pointers by Davon Blackwell and clutch free throw shooting by Taquan McNair sealed the deal.
I feel real good, man. I just want to say I love the guys, man. Everyone, we want to be here. And I just want to say I love them to death, and it was a good win.
We just know we had to come out here and fight hard. We didn't want to have the feeling we had two years ago when we lost to Monica in the state championship.
You went to the line with .4 seconds. Tell us how you felt going there?
I tried to make both of them, but the first one slipped, came off wrong. So I just had to make the second one so we can go overtime.
The team is so special. I can't even explain it, but the coaching staff, they've been there for the longevity. You know, 17 years, doing things the right way, sweating, tears, crying, getting upset with each other. But we stayed the course, and they came and played a great game tonight.
And so, as you can see the excitement, and to go into double overtime, I was like, I told Coach Brown, I said, "Y'all taking years off my life for this type of excitement." But I was so proud of the team and so proud of our students and thanked their parents for their support of their students and the family members for them. Coach Brown, is anything you want to say before we do our presentation?
Coach Brown, come here.
Thank you. I just, we just want to, on behalf of Lake Taylor Athletics, Ms. Wade Jenkins, the boys' basketball program, along with the girls' program, we just want to thank y'all for inviting us out for this occasion. A very special occasion, I think, with the boys' title. This is the first state championship in the 50-year school history. So we're pretty excited about that. And got a great group of young men, we do things the right way. All the seniors that graduate on time. So we're just appreciative that we can come down here to be a part of this recognition. And Dr. Boone and the City Council and also the school board members, we would like to say thank you very much.
You have something going on to college, right?
Yes, we have our six seniors. We have four that will be attending college on four scholarships. And we have... Always, in every interview, you never see them much because they don't score a lot of points. But actually, they're the key, the catalyst to the team. The Washington Twins, they are already committed to the Marines, and they'll be leaving July 16th for the military.
Of course, our district athletic coordinator, Steve Sutton Miller, again, is right there with our teams, with our coaches. And so, thank you, as I call him, Coach Sutton Miller. So we're ready for the presentation.
All right. Indeed, so we get the board to line.
Butts, okay, y'all come on up, all right.
And as the board is lining up, I'll call the coaches first. First, we have Coach Derek Edwards. Assistant coaches, welcome. Then we have Assistant Coach Joe Bryant, Senior. And we have Head Coach Kenneth Brown. And what I'm going to do when Coach Brown finishes shaking hands, if you can come back, Coach Brown, to introduce your team. Coach Brown, if you can circle back to me. I'm going to give you the opportunity to introduce your full team. Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Next, we have Gerald Goshee, the manager. Akwan Lyons. Anthony Hicks. Kayshawn Ward. Ishmael Washington. Edward Mitchell. Corinthian Sessoms. Darrell Sparks. Zairel Mitchell. Taquan McNair. Tyler Washington. Tyrone Washington. And our three captains, Jalen Jordan, Darian Sebron, and Joe Bryant. And the Lake Taylor Girls Basketball Program, we have Jasmine Dotster, Asia Monae Johnson, Daneria Spratley, and Kalis Hunley. Spearheaded by the one and only Ms. Wade Jenkins.
So if the board doesn't mind, we'll take a quick picture. If we get you all to come together. So we'll put you, the board will be in the middle.
Team on either side of you. Or you want us to step forward?
They're taller than we are.
And I fail to say that the Lake Taylor Girls were state runner-ups in Region Four. So they had to come on.
They want to block your mouth, that's all.
There we go. Some of you told them when I grew up. Ms. Wade Jenkins?
Yeah, Ms. Wade Jenkins.
Ms. Wade Jenkins? Coach Sutton Miller?
Fine, look at me, if you can't see me, can you? There's the shots here.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and proceed. Dr. Boone, is there anything else you wanted to add on that or any other matter before we move off the agenda?
No, just simply, I think you see from the young people you met today that they are coached well, and they represent Lake Taylor High School and Norview High School very well. And Mrs. Sawyer is the girls' basketball coach. She couldn't be here today. But very proud of them. Actually, it was interesting, one of the Virginia High School League officials, not game officials, but one of the Virginia High School League officials, said to Coach Sutton Miller, myself, after the girls' game, they said, "You know, I've watched this team play this season, and if I had a daughter, I would want her to be on that team." So that says a lot for Miss Sawyer and her team. So we're very proud, very proud.
All right, so we'll proceed on with the agenda. And so next, we have inter-agency collaboration and wraparound services update. Dr. Boone?
I'll ask Dr. Burdson to come up. This is one of our very, very exciting inter-agency efforts that we spearheaded. And Dr. Burdson has talked about the overview of the inter-agency collaboration and wraparound services. And this is a very, very special collaboration that, again, gets to some of the issues that we've talked about over time. How do we begin to address the social-emotional needs of our students for success? How do we, as we think about our alternative ed review and program information, how do we help address behavioral concerns and equip our teachers and principals and others with what they need to have a great school culture? So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Burdson.
Gordon, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, Dr. Boone, good afternoon. If you recall during a previous presentation that I provided to the school board, I shared with you that the school division was able to secure a two-year pilot program through United for Children to support our work in the area of trauma-informed care. We are working in partnership with our colleagues from the UP Center to provide professional development series for administrators, teachers, and staff. Being trauma-informed in schools, if you recall, means being informed about and sensitive to trauma and providing a safe, stable, and responsive environment to help students rebuild a sense of safety and control and regain the ability to focus on productive behavior in academics and learning. For the purpose of our work, trauma is defined as any ordeal that causes stress and evokes feelings of helplessness and fear. Some examples of trauma include, but certainly are not limited to, physical and sexual abuse, bullying or being threatened, abandonment or neglect, death or serious illness of a family member, incarceration of a family member or a loved one, and experiencing or witnessing some type of community violence. The overarching goal of the trauma-informed care training is to positively impact students and school culture and the path of our students who are most vulnerable. By establishing a culture of safety and well-being for students and staff, the stage is set for increased positive student-teacher relationships and improved educational outcomes for our children. This afternoon, I have asked the lead trainer for our pilot program, Andrea Long, to provide additional information to you regarding the various components of the pilot program currently being implemented in five of our schools. Ms. Long is a licensed professional counselor who serves as the chief program officer at the UP Center, where she is responsible for guiding effective strategies for service quality and impact. In addition, Mrs. Long serves as a college professor of psychology and child development and considers teaching others to be a high honor. So without further ado, I introduce to you Mrs. Andrea Long. Andrea?
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Burdson.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Mr. Jordan and other board members. I'm exceptionally excited to be here and to have some time to talk with you this afternoon about this very progressive initiative. I did bring forward a PowerPoint presentation. There are eight slides that are being posted for your review. However, in all honesty, my hope is that we won't be distracted by the slides. But instead, I will be able to use the time allotted to me, and I understand that it's not a lot. But I'll focus on using the first 15 minutes to just give you a very wide-angle view of the initiative. And if I've done my job well, what will spring forward are a series of questions. I will engage you and hopefully have you consider, hmm, this is something that I really do want to know more about. And from there, our conversation will flow. So that's my aim. The PowerPoint will work in the backdrop just to kind of give me some guidance. Although I did forget my glasses, so it doesn't really matter. Might have to go off script a little bit, right? So, can I borrow that from you, Dr. Burdson?
Sure, absolutely.
Here's the springboard statement, if you will. While academic curriculum matters, it is the social-emotional foundation of children that primarily determines academic success. And I think if we understand the process of development, we know that being able to really optimize your school experience has its roots in readiness, being prepared and able to receive the instruction and participate in the design of the classroom in such a way that you can make good use of the information that you're receiving. We all agree on that. We also know that with 69.5% of our students in Norfolk Public Schools being eligible for free or reduced lunch, we know that we have a very large body of students who are managing issues of stress and, in some instances, households or communities that are bringing some variables that are not allowing them to have the most stabilized and, you know, linear progressive in development that we would like. So when we know that children have a lot of needs coming to the table, we want to make sure that our school environments, coupled with well-trained, committed teachers, which we already have, also have some additional resources so that we can address those social-emotional needs, ensuring that our children are ready to learn and can capitalize on the instruction and the experiences that are being delivered. So when we were first given this opportunity to work collectively with Norfolk Public Schools, one of our first steps were to meet with the principals and try to get an understanding in a very customized fashion. Because while many of our schools share the same needs and have the same intentions, each of those experiences play out decidedly different. So our first conversations with principals revealed, again, similar stresses, but still craving an opportunity to customize how we were going to be able to engage and understand the needs of the teachers and understand the needs of the students as well. We're using an evidence-based curriculum called compassionate schools. And this operates as a wonderful framework because it gives us access to instruction and intervention that we can use with the teachers because we're providing classroom observations and giving them support on how to best manage their classrooms and best facilitate transitions and best engage with all of the various needs that their students are providing. And it also gives us some instructional information about trauma-informed care, as Dr. Boone described, about how the brain develops and how the brain is organized and how, when we understand what the brain, how the brain responds, when we take that knowledge and convert it into tools that teachers can use, we really have put ourselves in an arena for a win-win experience. So the five schools that we're currently engaged with, the PB Young Elementary, Chesterfield, Tightwater Park, Jaycocks, and Ruffner, each have a decided dyad, a pair of trainers, that are working with them continuously. Since the beginning of October of last year, those trainers have been in those schools, meeting with those teachers, getting to know that student population, working with the principals and other leaders in the school to determine how we can really optimize this experience. So this partnership has really become something that the teachers, from the feedback we're getting, are coming to rely on as an additional adjunct to the supports and the instruction that they're getting from their own school, from their, you know, principals and administrators. And now this relationship is starting to allow us to really work with the schools in a very intimate and trusting fashion so we can identify what the areas are that teachers and students are really struggling around and work collaboratively to try to do some problem solving and bring some provocative, you know, intervention to the table. All rooted in science. That is so important that we understand. We are operating based on what we know about the brain and how children learn best and what stressful environments need in order to minimize the stress and allow individuals to be able to focus and have good outcomes. So I'm just going to take a few minutes to talk about a very important study that's really kind of a significant undergird to this work. It's called the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study. And I'm sure there are many of you in the room who have heard of that study. It's probably one of the most important epidemiological studies that we've had in our nation since the beginning of time. Kaiser Permanente in the Center for Disease Control did the longitudinal study, where in the end, they came to just simply understand that there is a positive and ongoing correlation between stress and subsequent difficulties, both on a medical plane, a mental health plane, and a social interpersonal plane. So the more stress you have early on, the stronger the possibility that you will have difficulties later on. It is just that simple. And so when we understand that, and again, we know that 69.5% of our children in the city of Norfolk are eligible for free and reduced lunch, it's obvious to assume that we've got children who are experiencing stress. In many instances, acute, in most instances, chronic. So that alerts us to the fact that if we have children who are coming to us with high ACES, high adverse childhood experiences, it behooves us to build in a level of responsiveness that takes those ACES into considerations. So if I know that my students are managing ACES, such as any instability in the home, or maybe they've been transient and have to move around a lot, or maybe they don't have as much supervision as we would think is ideal because mom and dad are out of the house having to work and they have additional responsibilities to manage their siblings. If I know that my student is presenting an ACE and not just being intentional and not just trying to be difficult for difficult sake, then that allows me to approach those scenarios in a very different fashion. And now I can begin to create and consider options in ways that will not only allow me to have a good interpersonal relationship with my student, but really clear the runway so that he or she is going to be able to learn more effectively, which is ultimately what we're interested in. So, this is where I need to look into the book. This slide just really brings our attention to what I've already said. This dose-response relationship. The extent to which our children are exposed to ACES certainly infers that later on, they will have difficulties that will manifest in many arenas. I need to take a minute now and just kind of interject this concept of ACES not only being applicable to children, but being applicable to who else?
Adults.
Adults. And who are the adults in this scenario?
Teachers.
Teachers, administrators, right? Just because we grow up, doesn't mean that things that have impacted us early on fade away. And so, an important component of this project is while we are educating teachers and administrators about ACES and about the impact of stress and trauma, we're also supporting schools in creating a corridor where they can have those conversations about how stress is impacting teachers and what that looks like and what the impact is. And how can we continue to support them in being the best teachers that they want to be while recognizing that stress is at play? And sometimes, stress will just make you a little less tolerant. In addition to the fact that when you're stressed, you can't be as creative and responsive as you want to be. But when we offer our teachers and our principals and our administrators an opportunity to have those questions, then we can begin to problem-solve in a very real-time, you know, provocative, innovative way that, again, sets the stage for everyone to be successful. So a few examples of how this dose-response relationship plays out relative to ACES. Students dealing with ACES are, as the data has indicated, two and a half more times likely to fail a grade. They are more likely to have receptive and expressive language difficulties. So students who are managing ACES might not be able to articulate or might not be able to receive information as well as we would expect them to. They're more likely to have a lower score on a standardized achievement test. They're more likely to be suspended or expelled. And in many instances, they're more likely to be identified as deemed eligible for special education services. What we have heard early on in the implementation of this pilot, when we talk to teachers about trauma and how it influences a student's ability to learn, and we remind teachers that sometimes the question is really not to say to a child, "What is wrong with you?", but instead, "What has happened to you?" It offers up a completely different lens, a completely different opportunity for us to think about how we can approach and respond to the needs of the students, which in turns allows the teacher to be more successful because they have better relationships and they can bring forward, you know, the teaching that they're already committed to doing. So we're keeping that in mind. And every time we have an opportunity to talk to a teacher or a principal or any of their leadership team members, we're having that conversation. So now I just want to speak very specifically to the components of this important initiative. The first, of course, is the investment. We were able to secure funds through United for Children under United Way because they had already begun to recognize the importance of us doing something very comprehensive and responsive. As they identified certain communities that they were investing in, it would make sense that we would also invest in the schools associated with those communities. Children spend 60% of their waking time in the school. What better arena to make an investment to help them to be successful in all their domains of functioning, right? We started in October by launching a comprehensive training at all of the five schools. The principals saw fit that all of their teachers were in attendance. And so we had some pretty crowded rooms. And for four hours, we talked about neuroscience and the brain and compassion fatigue and silencing behaviors, those types of behaviors that we sometimes adopt that when we begin to feel so overwhelmed, we don't know what else to do. So we kind of developed this unspoken, yet understood body language that we use to communicate with each other that says, "Leave me alone. I just, I can't do anything more." And what we found is that the teachers were both ignited by the information. And I'm going to go ahead and use the word liberated by the information, that wow, this is what you call it. And now that I can claim it, to use a psychological term, now we can tame it. Now we can begin to address it and work on it in an environment that's giving us license to recognize that this work is difficult. But by understanding these other components about stress and the brain and how they interact, we begin to allow ourselves to create some other options and some other inroads. Following the training, we engaged in a process of classroom observations. And so now we have an opportunity to go and see firsthand how teachers are manifesting their magic and how they are managing their challenges. And the teachers have been incredibly receptive, allowing our trainers to come in and to sit quietly in some instances, and in other instances, to get up and help to give some hands-on instruction and guidance in areas that are most critical, like helping students to transition, helping children to self-regulate and kind of get relaxed. Classroom organization, looking at the ergonomic design. You know, what's the best classroom setup for everyone to be engaged and to everyone to be able to keep their eyes on the teachers? And at the same time, the students have responded by confirming through changed behavior that this works. And so now the teachers are asking for us and looking for us when we're in the hallways. "Hey, Ms. Watson, are you coming to talk to me this afternoon?" Now, why am I mentioning that? Because anytime you get into a space where people are being observed, well, you know the rest. Few of us are interested in that. But yet, we've been able to unfold an experience where people are seeking it and using it for their advantage because they understand the impact for the students. At the same time, we're engaging in a parallel process. We're having a conversation with a local university about the process of evaluation, analysis and evaluation. Why? Because at the end of the exercise, it is imperative that we identify what the critical components are that are really working. We don't want to just think that it works because we believe it to be so. We need to verify that it is true. And so, we are, as I stated, undertaking this process of looking at, how do we ensure validity and reliability with our process so that we can capture it, document it, and here's the take-home, replicate it. the take-home, replicate it. Because once we identify what works, we're certainly invested in availing it to as many of the public school environments that we can get ourselves into. So here's a phrase that we came across, or a statement rather, that just absolutely encapsulates what our experience has been thus far. When you're learning to be a teacher, you think it's just about lesson plans, curriculum, and seating charts. I was blindsided by the emotional aspect of teacher. I didn't know how to handle it. And we've signed this very many teachers because we've heard versions of the statements from a lot of the teachers that we're working with. No, no one's saying, "I'm not interested in being a teacher. This is not at all what I wanted it to be," or "I'm out of here," as my mother used to say, "on the first thing, smoking," right? No one is saying that. But the teachers are acknowledging, yes, this is a space and a place where we're absolutely needing some additional guidance and assistance, and this is where our evidence-based curriculum, presented in a fashion that feels supportive and is easily integrated, comes in. And really, that's the crux of the initiative that we're offering. So, I'll share with you as I wrap up my presentation and hopefully begin to engage in a quick question and answer exchange, some early lessons learned. The first, in many instances, we found that a solution has become the problem. What that means is we have a number of students who are attempting to manage their life using behaviors and protocols that in some arenas have served well. If you come from an environment that's relatively chaotic, then you might have adopted some capacity to manage that chaos, and it might work exceptionally well in your home environment. It might not play out exceptionally well in the classroom environment. So that's where this lens comes in. What has happened to our students and how can we build an environment that understands it, supports it, builds in accountability, and gives them the intervention so that they can attend to the academics and be supportive and realize the same goals as the young people that we just witnessed a few moments ago? The second lesson learned is that when we understand cause and effect, options and opportunities for new outcomes are created. I just can't really stress enough that that's what we're buying into. We're investing in other options and other opportunities being created because this framework is so comprehensive. It talks about addressing the academics, but it also recognizes the need to address the other domains of our students and our teachers. And thirdly, as I started with, investments in academic success are not solely through academics. And so when we remind teachers that it's important for children to move and to have opportunities to participate in activities that incorporate music and rhythm because that helps to reset the brain, they say, "Oh, okay." That's right. So when our students are having a bad morning, we can't withhold any movement activities because that's not going to work out well. And when our teachers understand that, now, again, we've got more options. Now their toolbox has been increased and they can invest in doing the work that we are charging them to do. When the school year ends, there'll be an opportunity for us to reflect further and see what we feel we have done well, what we have learned, and we will ideally have the benefit of an evaluation arm for us to really get very operational. You know, anecdotes have their place, but at the end of the exercise, we really want to understand and be able to evaluate and almost quantify, if we will, what has worked. So we look forward to the opportunity to continue that reporting process. I will submit that Dr. Birdsong does an exceptional job in engaging us and keeping accountability on deliverables high on the list, and that works well for us because that's the same thing we're asking of our teachers, and that's the same thing they're asking of the students. And so it's good that it starts from the top and it goes all the way, all the way down.
If I could, thank you, Ms. Long and Dr. Birdsong. I also want to acknowledge in the audience with us today is Ms. Tina Gill, who's the Executive Director of the Up Center, and Sarah Bishop, who's also with the Up Center in support of this work. We came to, I think, this particular place. Sarah Bishop and I had several conversations around this work, and I had shared my interest in addressing that, just as I had received a major grant as I was exiting Worcester, to address this because I learned a lot from the diverse families that we had there, but also thinking about what happens also, that this is not the face of just someone. This is the face of all of our students. I saw this a great deal through the recession and families that had been very stable suddenly experienced instability, and how do we begin to support that? And if you think about our military-connected children, that's another example of, you know, the separation from deployment. You know, we have a carrier group going out today, the USS Truman is going out today in all of its group. And so routines and everything are established when the military spouse is away, but what happens when the military spouse returns because that stability gets shifted too? And so that's a place where too often people think trauma is about something physically happening to someone, but it's about how do I balance all of these things in my life? I'm just a little person. And yet mommy or daddy has to leave on deployment, or mommy or daddy has some challenges and, you know, and other things and what's going on. And so how do we support those babies? And so in conversations with Sarah Bishop and ultimately with Tina and Andrea and everything, we worked toward this, developing this relationship, this collaboration in a way that we could begin to pilot this work to see what's making sense. One of the things that we do know is that we have greater need than our current capacity. And, but as we talked a little bit during the budget cycle and budget work sessions, that we want to stay, of course, with this particular model because constantly introducing new pieces keeps it too fragmented. We need to be able to monitor and see what's happening. But we also, as Andrea said, are really looking at what's the data around this, and the benefactors, the funders for this also want to know what's the return on investment and how do we begin to quantify the results of this? And so we're, you know, we have other schools lined up. They contact Dr. Birdsong and say, "Hey, can we get some of this trauma-informed care stuff?" And, you know, she's done some creative things for us to be able to reach some other schools, and she may mention that. I'm trying to talk a little bit for her because she has a cold today. But this is what makes this work so deeply exciting. And again, we're owning it in a way that is not just a child's problem, but it's also how do adults respond to what they receive. I love the quote about lesson plans, curriculum, seating charts, the emotional piece is what we don't necessarily anticipate, and how stressful that can be for the adults, even when it's the positive emotional piece. So I'm going to be quiet and thank both Tina and Sarah for being here today in support of this work, and turn it back over to Dr. Birdsong.
We certainly want to take your questions. I know you have questions for us. I did want to add that Pam Wong, who works for the City of Norfolk Department of Human Services, she is one of our trainers. She is able to take on the schools that have requested the trauma-informed care training. So she's done the trauma-informed care one-on-one for us, and it's very much aligned to the work that Mrs. Long and her colleagues are doing with our schools. So we're definitely appreciative of that partnership as well. So at this time, we're happy to take questions from you.
Dr. Gabriel?
Mrs. Long, thank you for your presentation. It was excellent. I think you hit on a very important point at the very beginning when you said that the goal is to increase the positive student-teacher relationship.
Absolutely.
Because when the teacher and the student can come together on the same page, that's when the learning can really start to begin and be accelerated. And it is so true that, you know, a lot of our teachers in their training may not, well, probably don't get this type of education in their curriculum. I have two questions. Can you kind of walk us through what a typical day is like for a trainer, number one?
Absolutely.
And then, number two, with the feedback that you get from this pilot, and you had mentioned that you have a relationship with a local university, what are we going to send back to them so that they can incorporate this perhaps in their teachers who are coming through and then will eventually be coming to Norfolk Public Schools?
Great question. So I'm going to go, of course, first to a day in the life of. So, early on, the trainers were in the schools collecting observations, just really being respectful of the fact that teachers and students are there working hard. And so we were asking for permission, can we come in and collect some observational information so that we can better understand? We don't want you to tell us. We want to see with our own eyes and then carve out some time to support you and understand how you're interpreting what's going on, because the way that we observe it might be decidedly different from how you're perceiving it. So we needed to build in some time to respect the fact that folks are showing up and doing hard work every day, and then build a relationship that says, "Well, we've got some information that we'd like to offer you and invite you to try some things out." And so we have a template, if you will, that shapes our observations, and there are things like, "Did you observe the teacher being able to engage consistently across the majority of the students?" Because, you know, to your point, Ms. Gabrielle, when a teacher is trying to manage a classroom and there's one student who might be having specific difficulty, the reality is sometimes that student can eclipse or begin to dominate, and then that becomes the overarching dynamic in the class. So the teacher can't necessarily avail him or herself to the other students in the way that they want. And so is the student able to, excuse me, is the teacher able to, I'm going to use the word toggle, between trying to manage one student and not, you know, to the deficit of being able to engage the other students? So that's a very concrete observation that we can offer teachers that sometimes they're not aware of. But when we say, "Did you notice how, you know, this student, as you were attempting to engage, just really kind of, you know, took all your time?" And as a result, they're like, "Wow." So here's something that you can do. And so now we're going to take the observation and offer some very tangible interventions that teachers can begin to implement immediately, and then we're going to come back and do a subsequent observation because it's important that that feedback be offered. We've had some teachers who have invited us to do some videotapes of them, only them, in how they are speaking to students, how they are facilitating transitions, and they're saying, "Wow, I had no idea my voice sounded this way." So very tangible, real ways. So any trainer can go to a school and say to three teachers, "I'm going to come see you for an hour, come see you for 45 minutes, come see you for 30 minutes, conduct those observations, and then circle back when the teachers are free, whether they're planning time or their lunch hour, and then give them that feedback." And then, either that day or another day, they are returning to the school to speak to the principal because it is imperative that we make sure our principals are being kept abreast of the engagement that we're building with the teachers. It was Dr. Birdsong who asked a few weeks ago that we just go ahead and have a standing appointment with every principal every two weeks, 20 minutes at least, just to make sure that they are connected and hearing directly from their facilitator what our observations are. And the additional value of that touch-based time is because we are trusting that ultimately schools are going to begin to build this muscle and are going to begin to adopt these practices on their own. And so part of the aim is to move it into the school so it's more internally directed and not externally driven. And that really is a, you know, a critical component of any good initiative, that you build in something that allows the players, the participants, to kind of create the sauce, you know, on their own. And so, if I'm answering your question, I'm trying to give you an illustration of all the components, but in a given day, the trainers are in the school, conducting observation, revisiting the information that we presented initially in the training. There's a lot of exchange of webinars. I want you to read this, you know, this article. I want you to look at this webinar. I want you to try this out. We had one teacher who was having some difficulty in just kind of managing his third graders from the top of the day. And what we understand is the top of your day kind of sets the tone for the rest of your day. So how can we get our arms around that? So our trainer offered him the opportunity to use some music, and what was agreed upon in the class is that no one, teacher included, could raise their voice any higher than the volume of the music. So this does a couple of things. First of all, it gives us some structure. Everybody knows what to expect, and don't we all respond best when we know what to expect? The second thing we know is music helps to settle ourselves, and so that's a value add. And the third thing is, the teacher was able to have an experience where he was offering something good for his students and his students were responding. So not only did that impact the content, it impacted the process, the dynamics. Now I've had a success, and success begets success. The students were able to know this is what the expectation was, and they were able to respond to it. The reason why I'm giving this particular example is because we had occasion to be back in that school on a day when that teacher was absent, and we happened to be next door when the substitute was there, attempting to find her way, I shall say. And our trainer was able to go in and say to the students, "Hey, guys, you know what it is that you need to do to help yourself to get ready for a good day?" The student said, "Put the music on," and there you have it. So now we're giving tools that allow students to develop their own sense of management, internal locus of control, and competency, all of that, just what the teacher being able to recognize and receive the assistance that was being made available. Okay. Second question, if you could repeat for me, please.
Your connection with the universities?
Yes.
How is that going to go back to them so that they can help with the training or training?
So, we are in the throes of developing the most indicated evaluation design, if you will, but at this juncture, we would expect that the evaluators would also come to the school and assist us in observing, establishing relationships, and using that, those observations to make decisions about what's going to be our best way to collect information. So for example, at the end of the exercise, we want to know, does this initiative help with students increasing their on-task classroom time? Does it help with schools managing their internal and external suspensions? Does it help with teacher retention? So some of that information just needs to be collected through surveys and responses. And then the evaluator will help us to identify what instruments will best allow us to know that A, you know, generated B. And so I think that's a roundabout way of saying that we're not going to be delivering any information to our evaluators. We expect them to come on-site with us, help us to understand what the best evaluation design will be, and then support us in implementing it, collecting the data, and then moving from there. Is that the answer to your question?
And I think the goal is ultimately, hopefully if I understand your question also, is not only what do we learn by having an external evaluator, but what will the colleges learn?
Right.
And the one who's connected to this evaluation to begin to build some things into their curriculum.
Right, exactly.
College program or studies change very, very slowly, and everything, you know, has to go through the State Council of Higher Ed. But I think, again, having evaluators on-site to see it through the lens
Right.
of the teachers and the students might help them in the conversations they have back at them.
Absolutely. Dr. Moon, pardon me, I wasn't quite perceiving it that way. And so we know that in the Virginia Commonwealth University, their School of Social Work has moved to do some similar work. They work with local schools, and once they understood some of those training variables that were really germane to the teacher's success, the School of Social Work moved to make them standing components of their curriculum. And so that certainly would be something that we would want to facilitate in our community.
Around the, or Ms. Doyle, did you have anything?
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was very well done, and I think the community has now a very good appreciation of the work that the School Division has taken on this year. I'm sad to see it only be two years. I hope we extend it past the two.
Those are the first two years. As I look at Tina's, these are our first two years.
Got you, okay.
Not the terminal two.
Because I think this really has some good longevity in the division. So I just really appreciate your efforts and your clarity of explaining what it is and how we are determining outcomes as a result of it.
Excellent, thank you.
Wagner?
Teachers really do need the support. I had a couple of questions, one about your evaluation design. It has not been developed.
Correct. We're in the process.
You're in the process. So do you have like a boilerplate designed for them to begin?
I think the answer is yes and maybe. And the answer is yes because we're going to our local partners, our local university, and saying, "This is what you do." You know, we're program designers and implementers, but we don't do research. And so what we're doing is calling best practices across other cities and communities who have done this so we can understand, you know, what is the best practice? What are the standardized assessments that we have to use? How can we build a process, again, that accounts for reliability and validity? And that's why we're engaging a university that does research so they can help derive the design, as opposed to the program saying, "This is what we would like." Now, that said, there are some assessments that are coupled with the Now, that said, there are some assessments that are coupled with the evidence-based curriculum, the compassionate schools curriculum that we're learning. And so, those are some early assessments that we've been able to use. Every teacher who participated in the training got a pre-test, if you will, because we understand that we want to assess where people are relative to their knowledge about trauma and stress, and we'll have that baseline. And then, we have a post-test that each teacher will be able to complete at the end of the school year. But we also know that there are so many other variables that are influencing, you know, outcomes that that's not empirical enough. So, that's what we're starting with. And then, as we continue to engage the university, they will help inform the research design so we can ensure high reliability and validity in the process.
Another thing, the teachers, of course, are learning how to deal with the behavior. And of course, in terms, the students are learning themselves
Yes.
how to deal with, intrinsically with their behavior. So, in that environment, it's like they're beginning to understand how to control the behavior, student and teacher. Is there something that transitions into the home for the parent? And does it work with the PBIS, our PBIS program? It does? So, how do we transition, if we see behavior that just does not seem to change dramatically within the classroom setting and may need to go and work with the parent, how do you do that? How do you identify that and?
So, that is absolutely a question that every school has and every school has posed. You know, this, a big component is working with families, you know, how do we take this back into the community? And of course, in managing capacity, we want to make sure that we don't commit to something that we couldn't conceivably really impact in a really meaningful way. However, an early dividend of training teachers is now they have perhaps a more effective way to engage and communicate with the parents around what is going on with the, in the classroom. Or, as we've seen in a few spaces, teachers are able to bring parents in and say, this is what we're doing in the classroom. Might you try some of this in the home? So, we understand that, you know, in order to effectively manage the needs of students, you have to be able to address all domains. And with, as we continue this work with each school, we certainly will have conversations about what can we do to either engage parents more or to, you know, make sure that teachers in the best position to engage parents most effectively. But right now, we're not making a commitment to do family work only because we know the realities of diluting what we're attempting to do here, not because we don't get the value and the importance, but our teachers in our schools are a captive audience. And so, if we can really optimize that, we're putting our teachers in a position where they're going to be able to continue to assess their children effectively and engage their parents more effectively. And we would look to figure out, how do we build that on, you know, moving forward? Many of the schools do have other programs and services that integrate families. So, it's not as if families are not getting support or connection right now. And if Dr. Birdsong can speak more to that.
All five of those schools, Mrs. Wagner, have therapeutic day treatment providers within the buildings. And they can provide services and supports to the families.
One last thing, because with those, with the in-school ones, I don't think they can transition because they can't double dip.
They do provide in-home counseling and family supports, yes, ma'am.
And both, the agency can do both?
Yes, ma'am.
They can double dip?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's something new. They used to couldn't do that.
They can.
Right, and it wouldn't be double dipping per se, as much as many of those vendors have what I would call a continuum of services. So, the day treatment is appropriate to provide services for students while in school. Quite often, those same providers will provide intensive in-home services or other services that can be transitioned into the home or the community.
Okay, one other thing, and then I'm done. Your, how does this work in conjunction with our PBIS?
So, we appreciate the positive behavioral intervention system is just that. It's a way of conceptualizing how to respond to behaviors and make sure that, you know, we're addressing them in the best possible fashion. I would help you to know that PBIS is what we do and trauma-informed care is how we do it.
Okay.
Right, so PBIS gives you a set of guidelines and a lens through which you should look at what a behavior is and how you're going to address it. Trauma-informed care is your theoretical framework. It's helping you to understand that when you say to a child, hey, what's going on with you? Then, you're creating an opportunity for them to receive whatever intervention you might be giving them under PBIS. So, it's that overlay that allows us to really optimize this approach. And many of our trainers are working with the PBIS teams in each school. And so, we've been invited to their, you know, weekly and bi-weekly meetings, and they're talking about the success and the challenges that they have with PBIS. And then, we're using trauma-informed care training to help facilitate movement relative to PBIS. Because PBIS, again, is a framework, but you don't necessarily get trained in how to convert that model into everyday interactions with your students. And that's what the trauma-informed care supports teachers in figuring out how to do.
And if I can piggyback on that, Ms. Wagner, you all have heard me say any number of times that I felt we hadn't really fully implemented PBIS because most of our conversations were around what the children needed to do. But we weren't having those companion conversations about what the adults needed to be able to support in that climate and culture change, and so, this links those two.
Okay, I could talk to you a long time.
Yes, we planned for that, Dr. Robinson.
I think this work is invaluable, and I applaud you for raising the capacity of our faculty and staff to be able to help students cope with what they're going through. Because we know in healthcare that stress-induced diseases are the most prevalent diseases around just because of the increased inflammation, leads to all sorts of chronic degenerative disease. So, it's critical that we come up with strategies. And I think it's very wise that you're helping teachers and administrators understand that, how to identify the problems, and then come up with strategies on how to directly affect the behaviors. Is there a companion piece to that to direct specific interventions to help both teachers and students cope with stress? What specific strategies do you have in place? Or is that the next phase of the?
So, throughout each of the training sessions, you recall that the components are training sessions and then a classroom observations and consultations.
Right.
And in each of the training sessions, there is attention to self-care. And the way we're positioning self-care is that it's not something that you can decide if you will or will not do, but it's really an ethical requisite, that if you're not figuring out real, tangible, consistent ways to manage and balance your stress, that it is going to have a decided impact on your functioning, cognitively, socially, how you're doing your work, how you're interfacing with colleagues, et cetera. Genetically, right? So, we're building it in, again, as an ethical requisite. And the first time, we gave teachers a list of 142 different things that people would consider to be stress relievers or stress busters. And then, we gave people a stress management checklist. And so, when the trainers return to the schools, they're periodically saying to teachers, how are you doing with that list? Where's your stress management checklist? In the particular school that I spend most of my time with, Tywhor Park Elementary, it was wonderful because while the teachers were having a discussion about how they managed stress, they were saying, and we want to support our principal because she is so great to us, we want to make sure that she's taking care of herself, and she's going, we're going to hold her accountable, and she's going to hold us accountable. And so, everyone was able to buy into it. As I'm sure you know, Dr. Robinson, it's something that has to be revisited over and over and over again because we're changing kind of the culture around it, right? Sometimes, and we talk about this, how we wear, you know, we wear these badges about managing so much stress. And there comes a time when it just has an adverse impact. And so, we have built it into the training, it is part of our ongoing conversations. And that will no doubt be a portion that we evaluate as well. How imperative is it that we keep that stress management up front? But to just be very concrete, we offer the teachers and students very specific stress management techniques and encourage them to practice them on a regular basis.
That's what I'd like to hear about, the specific stress management techniques that, maybe the top three.
Right, I would say the top three are breathing and using mindfulness, and that has taken off expertly. The second one is incorporating movement and understanding that the body was meant to move and offering a framework that when students are allowed to move, whether it's getting out of their seats, rocking, jumping, anything, it helps to reset the brain, and that pays dividends for everyone in the long run. And then, I would say the utilization of music and visualization is one that has caught on significantly. And teachers like to use it a lot for transition, which means it happens multiple times during the day, transitioning children in the morning, from lunch to reading, et cetera, et cetera. And that's the one thing that we're hearing students talk about doing at home, using music to transition, using music to help calm their younger siblings down, et cetera. So, that has some portability. I would think those are the top three, that we're getting the greatest level of responsiveness from thus far.
Well, like everyone else, I'm very excited about this work. It's incredibly important, and we can't even get to, as you said earlier, the academic piece without this. I have a couple of questions, some were asked, I had similar questions to Ms. Wagner about, you know, the parents and caregivers. One piece of it, though, is when you started the work, what kind of feedback? Or how was this work initially communicated with parents and caregivers? Like, when it began, like, what kind of communication went out? Was there any resistance? Was there any fear around it or?
No fear around the work with children.
And, you know, I think that at some point, you know, that integration piece is important at some point in the, because I think you mentioned that in some programs, they do integrate the parents into the model. I think that's, that would be important at some point. So, as part of the comprehensive training with the teachers, was implicit bias training also part of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, because, you know, you can't talk about the brain without talking about bias. And every school did different types of icebreakers. So, one, for example, was we gave a description of a student, and there might have been a list of seven or eight challenging or adverse conditions. And then, on the other side of the screen were seven or eight characteristics that were very positive and more of the ideal student. And so, we asked teachers, you know, what do you think about those students? And they said, well, this student's going to be difficult, and this student's going to be easy, and this student probably is going to give me a hard time, and this student is going to respond, and so, da-da-da-da-da. And what we knew, it was the same student, right? And so, we had to really take some time to dissect and understand that once you marry yourself to a certain image, then everything that you decide and every behavior that you enact flows through that. And so, isn't that interesting, that this is, in fact, the same student, just perhaps under different circumstances or, you know, within different relationships? So, that was an opportunity, that was a bit of an aha. We, when we're really comfortable, we ask teachers to reflect on those teachers that had the greatest impact on them. And how easy or difficult is it for them to replicate those same types of teaching experiences and what gets in the way? But certainly, we spend a lot of time talking about the fact that often, when you are managing your students, it's not necessarily what you're looking at, but more the lens that you're looking through. And so, how do we make sure that we keep challenging our lens and asking ourselves, what else could be at play here? Because if there are other things at play, chances are there are other outcomes that we could achieve.
And one other, one other piece, when you started originally, when I saw that question, the solution becomes a problem, I was expecting maybe that there, you know, sometimes with work like this, it can trigger either for the student or for the teacher.
Absolutely.
And what kind of mental health supports were in place? And is that something that you foresee us needing to expand our capacity, you know, to be able to deal with that?
Excellent. Sarah Bishop just asked me the same question yesterday, we were talking about this. So, yes, we do talk about triggers and how that is real for every person in the building, no one is exempt. A lot of our teachers didn't understand the concept of triggers. They didn't know that, you know, raising their voice in an effort to get the attention of the students or maybe just, you know, tapping firmly on the desk could be the undoing of a student based on his or her previous experiences. And so, now that teachers are informed, they're able to make different choices. At the same time, we want to be careful that every behavioral, every demonstration of a behavioral need or challenge is not the equivalent of a mental health issue, right? And we know that teachers sometimes feel put upon if they're going to be tasked to make those types of determinations. You know, I'm not a mental health professional. And so, we're making sure that we're steering clear from that. We're not asking you to assess or evaluate or make any determination. We're asking you to look at ways in which you can develop behaviors and engagement so your classroom can be the optimal environment for any student. At the same time, the day treatment providers that Dr. Birdsong mentioned are in the schools, and that is the place where students can be referred to get more mental health-driven, mental health-based treatment and behavioral planning. Is it sufficient? Probably not. And, you know, since you've opened the door, I'll go ahead and say that a part of my fantasy is that at some point in the future, those providers who are clinically trained, who have relationships with teachers, will be able to expand their role. I mean, it's just a natural extension. We understand the systems, we made the investment, there's relationship, and we'll build on it. I think this is a great priming because we're helping people to understand about the prevalence of mental health or the prevalence of stress so that later on, when the resources are presented, people will be more inclined to participate in them because some of the stigma and some of the bias will have been reduced.
I share that fantasy because, you know, we certainly don't want our teachers to, we don't expect them to wear that hat also, you know, so that, but I ask so that, what others, so they feel more supported.
Right.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, great work.
Anything you'd like to?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Long, for your presentation. I also think it's excellent. I may have missed a little bit, coming in a little late. Mrs. Long, what is it that you're measuring in your pre-test? Are you measuring emotional and social intelligence on the part of the teachers? So, just what is it that you're trying to measure in that pre-test?
So, just categorically, we were measuring knowledge, skills, and ability. How much information do teachers have about the presence, prevalence, impact of stress and trauma? So, that's our baseline. And then, with that information, how capable, able are you to convert that into skills that allow you to increase classroom management, to have positive relationships with your students, to increase on-task time, to, you know, minimize the number of classroom referrals, et cetera, et cetera? And then, how do you take those skills and parlay them into, you know, more comprehensive, long-term abilities? And the reason why that's important is because, as we described, going forward, we want schools to develop this muscle and be able to implement it independently of someone else. And so, now, we're helping teachers to say, oh, yeah, I understand how this information can be converted into a skill, and now, I can use that ability to help my entire school move towards a culture that is more trauma-informed and trauma-responsive, and we can invest in resiliency and et cetera. So, the pre-test has some questions in those corridors. And then, the post-test will say, now that you've had this experience, how would you evaluate your movement relative to your knowledge about the brain, et cetera, skills and abilities? And so, that's the assessments that are attached to the curriculum. As I said, as we develop our evaluation, there'll be more tools to come on board.
What is your pre-test showing you for these students?
I would say the overarching analysis is that the teachers indicated that they had high knowledge, that people, teachers understood about the presence and prevalence of stress, that they understood that when children are stressed, they have a difficult time focusing, and it interferes with their learning, that, in general, that's what that data indicated. The surveys further indicated that teachers were rating themselves as moderate to high in their ability to convert that knowledge into skills. I would submit that the observations don't necessarily bear that out, that now that we're in the classroom. That now that we're in the classroom, we could at any given time bring a survey to a particular teacher and say, huh, okay, so this is how you were experiencing or evaluating yourself and here is how it's unfolding. And not in a way that, you know, feels like a reprimand or no, but just like many of us, reconciling what we know and what we do. And so that's what the early information showed us, that people felt like they had information, but we haven't completely checked the mark in converting that information into skills that are highly adaptable and responsive to the scenarios. Appreciating that with each given day and each given week, the needs continue to ramp up. And so what you knew and what you were ready to do in September may have waned a little bit now that we're in mid-year. So you might not be able to, you know, develop it as competently or as fully as you would have initially.
We could use that training. Thank you.
Thank you.
And actually, I just, first just want to thank you again for what you're doing and for the partnership. I had the opportunity to catch much of the presentation at the United for Children meeting. And as I sat there, I think I said in the meeting, that of all the investments that I'm aware of that United for Children has done, and they've done a lot and a lot of great things, I just thought this hit the nail on the head. And it really tied back to a lot of the conversations we've been having. You know, when I heard about the movement, I thought of Dr. Gabriel. And when I heard about the wellness and the growth and the trauma, you know, I thought about you, Dr., Ms. Basid and I knew Ms. Wagner would get excited about the wraparound supports and the connection into the home. So these conversations that we've had as a board and as we've talked about in our policies and our strategic planning, it just felt so good to hear how it went from a conversation we had here, what Dr. Boone brought in and said she would deliver to us and then watching it kind of unfold as this pilot was, you know, made me feel good in terms of the work that we do. And then the other thing that I really appreciated was your willingness and focus to not try to go too wide and not allow others to, you know, feature creep and keep adding... Well, in my world, we say feature creep. Keep adding things on top of it and be focused and be able to see what the results would yield and then allow us to build upon that. So, you know, I thank you for all the work, for the partnership, for the support, for Dr. Boone, Dr. Birdsong, and Dr. Rogers working with United Way, United for Children team to kind of restructure, refocus that relationship and just, you know, look forward to the continued work and whatever support so we can give. You know, one thing I would ask for all of us to think about and especially for your team moving forward, you know, we have, as a board, worked on wellness policies and other policies associated with that. If there's anything in the policy world that you come across or that you would recommend the board consider as part of this work, you know, that would be something that I think, whether it's from the evaluation standpoint or just from your own observation or hear from teachers or students or others that can support this work, then, you know, I think that would be helpful for us to hear.
Ask one question, I promise.
Or more than, because we're over time, so.
Do you have a library of selected music that you use?
We do, we have a, we do.
You do?
Yes, uh-huh. We'd be more than happy to make that available to Dr. Birdsong.
Share it with me.
Absolutely.
I can give you my doo-wop. It always helps.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, doo-wop is a big part.
See, there you go.
The requisite beats per minute that has a certain capacity to register with the brain. So you're right on with that.
Helps me deal with being on the board. So, thank you so much and we appreciate that.
My pleasure.
And thank you again, Dr. Birdsong and for everyone on the team. So, Dr. Boone, any closing comments on this before we move on?
No, I, the only closing comment is, again, this is part of our commitment, going all the way back to our review of our alternative ed practices and services. And why, again, the system stinker that I am, it's not just about doing one thing, but it's about analyzing where we are and what's the, what are the supports that we need to be able to make that happen. So this is another system of support. Again, as we address the over-representation of suspension in our district, and I love one of the things Andrea said, that not all behaviors are mental health issues. I would tag on to that, not all behaviors are special education needs. And therefore, how do we front-load success and not just have the very traditional pathways for service? That you have to be identified for something in order to get service or you label kids a certain way in order to deliver them. But what I appreciate in this work, when we think about trauma-informed care, that we're saying, there's a role that we play as adults in student learning. And the students will meet us where we are. And so as they affect their own behavioral changes, they learn and grow through this. And so that's the perfect win-win situation. You know, we've often talked about school safety and security. Just prior to spring break, I had superintendent student advisory council meeting. And when I asked those high school students, you know, as we addressed the issues of school safety and security, the one theme from all of the schools was that activities, clubs, events that allow students to be further connected to what's happening in the school was the first line that they saw for school safety and security. And so they get it. And so we've got to move away from just this one-size-fits-model of how you address needs. But again, not substitute this work for other things, but this is in addition to, but it's to help make the work easier. So, we're appreciative of the collaboration and excited about what the future holds for this. Because that's why I say, this is just the initial two years.
Thank you. Good clarifying point.
Thank you again and we welcome you back at any point in time that you feel it's appropriate to give us an update or give us any recommendations. So the door is always open.
Thank you, we'll look forward to that.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, continuing with that theme of updates and planning. Next on the agenda, we have an updating presentation on our ongoing educational planning. So I'll turn things over again to Dr. Boone. Would you like to introduce that?
As Tracy Richter comes forward, as we share with the board that there, this work is ongoing with cooperative strategies as we address our educational planning, how we begin to frame and utilize the information from the facility condition study and also the work that was undertaken as it relates to Maury. It just so happens that Tracy was part of the entity, the responsive RFP, and so as a result, he's able to talk about both sets of the work. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Tracy Richter.
And I'll just mention that I'm aware of the allotted time that you like to have and it's yours. Please take your time and...
Okay, excellent. Dr. Boone, President Jordan, members of the board, once again, great to be back here. There's so much work that happens behind the scenes and I don't, you know, we don't get an opportunity to catch up all that often. So it does get jam-packed, it feels like. But I think this is just really appropriate to follow that because these environments for our children also have behavioral causes and effects to that. And so it's important that our facilities help that. And so, and we've stated that since we walked in the door and we continue to go there. Today, I'm going to start with Maury, actually, and I want to talk about where we are in the update. Many of you were at the community meeting, so it's kind of a repeat of some things. But I want to get you caught up in where we are, what we're doing and what we're not doing there, because I think that's important. And then give you a facilities plan update. We're going to talk a little bit about the recommendations, a couple of recommendations that we made in November that we're going to maybe push back a little bit, but get some input on, talk about enrollment projections, give you kind of the high-level view of what the projections look like, and then look at the other initiatives that we're trying to follow here. So the first one is, and under the educational specifications update, I'm going to start with what we are doing. The second one is just as important, what we're not doing. I continue to, trying to work through processes that make sure we inform and try to eliminate as much misinformation as we can because I think it's important. I think that misinformation gets out and causes anxiety in neighborhoods and undue things that happen. So let's clarify some of that stuff, give you some of the community results that we've seen, and then a process update. So the first thing, what we're doing, we're planning, okay? We're doing vision and mission and a narrative of the program and we're identifying curriculum and function of the facility. We're looking at the space requirements and bubble diagrams of, you know, what programmatic needs we have. An educational specification is specifically a written communication of curriculum programs to inform design professionals, okay? And so when you start to do a facility, it's not like many of the projects that have been done in the past, not only here, but a lot of places, that we don't build buildings and then shove things in them to try to fit. We actually build it from function and we design from function. And so we go to the heart and the core of what we do in education. And so planning Maury is about that. I think that one of the responses, the repeated responses we got in kind of the challenges and the expectations exercise we did in the last community meeting was that we've been through this. Well, I'm going to contend you've never been through this. Probably the last time you worked on Maury, it was an architectural solution. It wasn't an educational solution. And an architectural solution is much different to what we need to do. And so, so when we do planning, what we're trying to do out there is we're trying to make sure that the vision comes through. And when we work with the staff and the students and the community to clearly define the vision, what we want to make sure is that the defining roles of what we have. So building on tradition while focusing on the future. It's no secret that board, that building has a bit of historic value to it and has a deep meaning and a deep-rooted meaning in that community. That means something. But how do we use that and move forward in the future? Because what this building serves is a community, but it also serves students for the future. And so trying to blend the two is very difficult. A school that serves the entire Norfolk Public School Division, this is important because I think that what this process does is it allows us to think about the idea of how we're going to shape high schools as we move forward. You have, you have a few high schools that need serious attention. This is not the only one and we all know that. We need to look at Lake Taylor and Booker T. Washington. As condition and programmatic improvements continue to happen in those buildings, this sets that stage. The reason we started with Maury, well, it's, you know, 600 years old. I mean, it's, it's old. And so we knew that we had to step into that building because of just the impending condition of being a 100-year-old building. Knowing that we have those same issues at other buildings, but this was one of the stepping stones that we could take. And so this really sets the standard for that. You know, making decisions on best practices of planning. We want to make sure that everything that we do has a comprehensive view of this. Look at the demographics, look at the condition of the facility, look at the educational appropriateness of the facility, look at that educational program. That old stool that I used to show you guys almost every meeting applies to this. All of those things that come along with it and eventually including cost. Cost will become a part of this discussion. It is not part of our scope and I want to make that very clear. It is not part of our scope to cost this thing out. It is our scope right now to make sure we're doing these things. And so we're not here to decide what the disposition of the building's going to be. And I'm going to show you that in a minute. So what we're not doing, we're not designing. We're not putting a form around this function yet. We're not doing schematic design, we're not doing blueprints, we're not seeing construction documents. I think I got an email through the website that says, I'm glad to come to the community meeting this week, just send me the plans and the costs, send me the blueprints and the cost. I don't have those, so I didn't send an email, so I don't have any of that stuff. But this process will not determine the final disposition of the facility, but will inform it. And that's important, there's an important distinction there. I have heard, because you're going to hear this and I've been around long enough to know, that there are plenty of discussions happening in small groups out there in the communities that say, a decision's been made, they're tearing down the building, the wrecking ball's already out there. No, it's not. We need to clearly state that that is not the case. And when that starts, anxiety rises in communities. People get anxious, they get angry. We don't need that to happen, we need them to stay informed of this process. In the first community meeting, we did a nice job of trying to get around the idea of what this is about. And the few community members we had there, and I imagine we're going to get more tomorrow night, which will be awesome, understood that this has to start from the core root of education. It doesn't have to start with the building, but it will inform all those things that happen. So this process will not design a renovated or newly constructed building. That's not what this process is about. It will inform what happens to that. So when a decision is made or when money somehow magically appears to do real capital planning or capital implementation, there has to be a decision, an architectural decision, that looks at this educational specification and looks at the demographics and looks at, then looks at the condition and how that all fits together. And then looks at the cost to know what it's going to take to make that building the building that the children deserve, that they need for the best environment for learning. That's when that decision will be made. In this process that Mike Ross and I, Mike Ross is here with HBA with me, that we're going through, that is not our scope here. And so I want to make that very clear. So we're not going to process any schematic designs or blueprints or construction documents. So I hope you're not expecting that in the final deliverable because you're not going to get them. It's not in our scope of work. This process is really an iterative process that, as you know, how we do planning, is that everything builds on top of each other. You know, we start with curriculum, we do teacher interviews, but we also, not only teacher interviews, but we work at the district level. We work with, you know, Dr. Rogers and Dr. Coleman about how we're going to form high schools in the future and then what that looks like. You know, we went to EVMA. What an awesome experience to go to this and understand what students get to experience every day when they work in that partnership and what that means to them and how that program is a very attractive program. And how that not only does that for that building, but how it informs us for other specialty programs as we start to implement better in the future. For when we look at schools like Lake Taylor and Booker T. Washington, as we move forward on those condition and program things that we deal with in those buildings. So in that, then we have planning labs and those planning labs include community members that we've invited. They include students, which, let me tell you about these students for a second. They are amazing. And I'm going to, I'll let you know that when they walked into the room, I think first of all, they were like, you know, deers in headlights. They were like, what are we doing here? They weren't sure. And so as I took them through the process, as we were doing some other exercises and they got integrated into the process, you just can't believe how much it enlightened the adults about their everyday experience in a building. And it was amazing. And once again, I don't think that comes as any shock to us. And, you know, everybody thinks that we invite like, you know, the A student out there. No, we got the whole spectrum. We've got students in every walk of life in that building to represent a real diverse community that Maury High School is. Because Maury does represent this division. They truly do in their student enrollment. And so it's exciting to have them in the process to help inform us, but also that their impact, they know, is lasting. I think it overwhelmed them when I said, look, this building's over 100 years old. Whatever happens in this is going to have to be enduring as that. And that's a little overwhelming for a 17-year-old, I'm going to tell you. It's overwhelming for me as I do this. But I think that was really important. Then one of the next steps is at conducting school tours. So Mike was instrumental and Dr. Rogers were instrumental in setting up school tours across the state for schools that had these types of programs, but also just to see what is going on. You know, sometimes you get in your world and you need to step out of your world a minute to kind of see what else is out there. So they've been across the Commonwealth, looking at facilities and looking at and asking about those things. I didn't, I wasn't able to go to Kellum. Of course, I've been to Kellum a thousand times. But Mike was able to take them and I was informed that the students in there, when they toured the building, weren't asking about space. They weren't, they were asking about programs and how the programs kind of fit into everything. So their first thought of discussion, and the group's discussion now as we work in planning labs, is exactly that. They talk about that first. We don't, we don't even talk about space. And so I think that's important. The community meetings are important, too. They build upon the things that we talk about in labs. Tomorrow's night is not going to be any exception to that. What we talked about in the second lab are things like, you know, prioritizing expectations, you know, the community value of a Maury, you know, what that means to the community. The likes, what do you like about, what do you like about what Maury is? So we're going to go down those same exercises to reinforce the lab. And so as community members walk in tonight, tomorrow night, once again, we're going to educate on the process. We're going to say what this is and what this isn't, be very clear about what our intentions are. But we're going to do group exercise together and we're going to talk about expectations again and prioritization of expectations. And we're going to talk about, you know, how those meet your future needs and students' future needs. And then we're going to ask them, you know, about how, what the value of Maury is to the community. And I think those are going to be great discussions to help inform us once again about what this is going to be in the future. We are expecting to have a deliverable to the board, a draft at least in late May, and then a final document to you in June on this. So who we met with, you can see, we've met with everybody. I mean, we've met with every department you could possibly meet with. The notes on this and the summary of this is not a summary, it is almost a book of great information. And so when we meet with staff members like this, we are very careful to respect their current practices, but we're also very respectful in our questioning of how you're going to move that forward. We're not satisfied with how we just do things today. We're always thinking about future educational delivery models, even though they're hard to predict. And so all of these, we're asking those questions. And so, all of these, we're asking those questions. We met with EVMA, as I told you, and were able to do a tour of the labs and met with a great team and representatives from EVMA, they're EVMC, that are really focused on making sure that this isn't just a Maury thing. And that was maybe the biggest thing I got out of this, was that this is important to every child across the city. The access to programs, not just this program, but programs like this are important and that access and ability to get there is critical. So, our first visioning lab, again, you can see the students participating there, really focused on, was on February 28th, but we really talked about the profile of the Virginia graduate. And we talked about how this is encapsulated in what we do, you know, career planning, content knowledge, workplace skills, community and civic responsibility, how all of this works together to ensure that we're educating the whole child. And so, what I'm excited about is that, this is the second one I've seen, I work with a four-band independent in, just in the southwest part of Houston, that has spent about a year and a half working with community, working with research and working to define the profile of the graduate. And the profile of the graduate is obviously around rigorous curriculum, but there's so much more to that. Developing, you know, the compassionate student, developing the student of community, of value. All of those things come into play. And it's very hard to contextualize, when you're doing an educational specification, how that is relatable in a facility. What does it mean to be a compassionate citizen when you're looking at a facility? How do you do that? How do you put that into a picture or to a box or design it? And so, part of it is just digging deeper into this and we thought, we spent some time on this because we wanted to really understand where this drives us moving forward. So, we worked on planning guidelines, you know, we're very serious about how we structure this and as far as giving us planning rules. And so, they went through and quite a bit of exercise and this one took a while to define, you know, what our guidelines were. You know, equity of learning, accountability, so how do we get accountability in our building? How is it flexible? You know, it's fascinating when you talk to, when you start talking about future design, about, you know, horizontal and vertical planning and so, a building can deliver however you want to, whether it's grade level, whether it's department level, whether it's this, this and this. And it's amazing how quickly it retracts back to department, "We're going to be a departmental school." And until you push them back out and then you bring them back in and then eventually what an edspec does is bring you to that middle, that middle ground that says, you know, "These are best practices that current design gives us, but here's some best practice moving forward in design." And so, I think this is really about that. You know, space for extracurricular, I mean, we believe that the whole student really isn't just about science and math. We believe it's about theater, we believe it's about athletics, we believe it's about social clubs. All that support system makes a school great. And do our buildings provide that? You know, and again, setting the high bar for all these things. Relevance, real-life context is important to the group. Community space, I mean, this is truly a building of a community. I mean, and so, how do we relay that to space that, first of all, is very safe and secure for our students and staff, but is also very welcoming to the community that walks in the door? And so, that has to be part of what we do, too. So, again, the community support and the community servants and how we, again, reinforce that in what we're doing. So, our first community dialogue was really about process and defining scope and then we asked some questions about challenges and community expectations. And certainly, the challenges are around, there's a lot of discussion around funding and at times, maybe some stones thrown at different groups and organizations about where funding comes from. And I'm not sure that's appropriate because I think everybody tries their best to do what they do. But we're going to get there, there's got to be different pathways to get there. One of the things that we addressed with this group was, "Look, it doesn't just, it just doesn't go to the school board and your city council." The Commonwealth has retracted so many, so much funds from capital in the past 10 years through a lot of different sources that divisions don't get anymore. And so, it has to go to your state representative, your state senator, it has to go all the way to the top because it's a whole picture and a whole solution and everybody has these needs. So, I think that was part of it. Part of the challenge was really identifying that future with the historic value of the building. That came out as a challenge in this, but also as an expectation. Recognize the value of that, recognize that that is part of who we are and what we do. But again, you get both sides of the equation there. I mean, this is, look, it's going to be, as we move forward, I'm not going to pretend it's going to get easier. Because I think what you will have and what we're going to see, and we don't hide away from that because we don't, this is the reason we come to the table and we're in meetings like this, is that you're going to have those that want to push forward with, you know, 21st century education and moving forward on new space and that, and then you're going to get people who want to hold on to that history of the building and try to preserve that and model how we can model within the preservation of that. There is going to be that, we completely understand that. And you know what? Both conversations are welcome at the table because they need to be. They don't need to be pushing against each other, they need to work together to find out what is our best solution to this. So, we welcome the opportunity to make sure that that is coming up. And so, I thought that was a real good exercise for this group to have. Our next lab was about reviewing of the school tours, but looking at organizational models. We spent a lot of time on trying to get to what an organizational model is. There's several different ways to deliver a building. And trying to figure out what the benefits and challenges of each of those models is difficult. When, I remember when Mike and I worked on Kellum together, this was one of our first experiences with this, is that when you look at a double-loaded corridor, everybody thinks of 1950s building, they think of retro education, until you start to think about the real benefits of a double-loaded corridor, you know, straight sightlines, you know, good pathways, efficiency of square footage. I mean, there's a lot of benefits to that, but the challenges come in the educational model. And so, you push all the way to open spaces, 1960s and 70s buildings that had no walls and no hallways and you bring it all together. So, I thought this was an excellent exercise. The next steps in this one, we have, Planning Lab 3 is on April 26th and 8 to 4, we meet in the Media Center. And it's a challenge to meet in there. Last time it was, since the boilers got turned off, it got to be a hot day, the Media Center got really hot really quick. And so, but we do there and the staff and the principal, everybody's so accommodating when we're there, so we appreciate it. Community meeting dates, we have two more for people to come out to talk to us, April 12th and May 3rd, all going to be at Maury High School and in the cafeteria. Welcome the community. I'm going to take a break there on Maury really quick to kind of field any questions on Maury.
One point I want to reemphasize that Tracy has made so well and I think is important again for the community to hear this over and over again. The building does not begin with the bricks and mortar. A school begins with what its core function is and that's education. And so, the purpose of this educational planning process is to solidify what the core work will be so that you build the building around that rather than building a building and trying to fit the academic program into it. And I think that's the big takeaway and the big is simply that, we are not at the bricks and mortar stage yet. You know, let's think about it. You wouldn't build a building and call it a hospital and then have to go back and fit in surgical units and x-ray and, you know, all of that. You build with that in mind and what are the services you are delivering. Schools are no different. You build a school with about, around, what are the services that we're responsible for delivering? Those are educational and extracurricular and then we build the building around that. And that's, you know, I hope that will be the very strong takeaway that the board can also articulate and as others hear this, because that's the work that we're currently doing. There is no wrecking ball out front as is said. And we aren't at the place of how do we get to this, but we can't get to the bricks and mortar until we get to what the infrastructure. And that's been a lot of the conversation also when we think about the Conference of CTE High School. What's going to be inside the school that pushes then what the design of the building and the services look like? And so, I just wanted to reiterate that in terms of what Tracy has shared.
Any questions at this point on the process? Just keep in mind, we want to catch up timeline-wise, so if you have something.
Tracy, I was just interested in, when you did the tours of the other schools and the students and the planning group was interested in the program aspect, were there any big takeaways that you saw from the other buildings that you visited?
I think, actually, I think one of the big takeaways was, especially in a couple of the buildings, is how space can be used differently and not necessarily fit to what it might have just been conformed to before, is that, I mean, that's a big deal. I mean, when we're planning space in the future, there's a lot of efficiency in knowing that, you know, labs can be used for multipurpose, you know, functions. And I think that was a huge takeaway. I actually think they were impressed with the sustainable models that have been thrown into buildings. Students are very keen on that, they're focused on that quickly. So, I think they were impressed with how buildings today are being designed and regardless of what you think of how they look, but they're being designed so much smarter that a building that you see in today's architectural world with the great sustainable standards that are being put in there, we're getting our buildings back up to 80 or 100-year lifespans instead of back in those, you know, 40 or 50-year lifespans that we have such a huge portfolio in Norfolk on. So, I think they recognize what that means. But the flexibility of the space, they were like, "Oh, they're doing that and they're, that doesn't look like it'd be used for something like that." So, I thought that was really cool.
Anyone else? Can you continue?
Okay, planning. So, master planning update, update. I don't know why I have update twice in there, but, because it seems like there's a lot to do. First of all, I want to give you some enrollment background. So, we've done the projection and I'm going to start off with this, is that the projection this year, we've done just a quick analysis to see that our grades 1 through 12, projection of, you know, roughly 30,500 students was 92 students off this year. Very good, it matches. And now, remember, we do a live-in projection, so we do where students live and where we project them to be and we overlay boundaries on that. For facility planning, we think that's an effective tool. Because remember, if we can, if and when we move boundaries in the future, all we've got to do is reshift the boundary and historically put the geocoded students in the new boundary and we can project out immediately. So, we're not dependent on years of attendance to do that. So, it's from a facility planning mode, it's really good. We're right in line with Dennis's projections also. Where I'm going to tell you, but the reason I say 1 through 12 is that the kindergarten enrollment, I'm going to show you in a minute, we were high last year and we were high by just under 200 students, which I thought was fascinating. Dennis was a little high, too, and Dennis and I, we talk about this a lot, about trying to push that number down, but it's hard to get that number down. And I'll show you why, a couple of things. We know that there's been declining birth rates in Norfolk across the board. And though, remember, we talked and again, we're trying to get updated data as quickly as we can, but, you know, the Department of Health has it up to date as far as we can get it. So, the 2014 also showed another year of decline in birth data. Once again, the less kids that are born here, the less kids that show up here. And so, if you run a consistent birth to kindergarten, what we call survival ratio, if you run a consistent number, and you guys have, lower numbers mean lower entry. And so, everybody's dealing with the phenomenon, you just, you kind of deal with that. The only thing it helps that is if we get more progression in, in later grades. Now, also on building permits, and again, this is where we have a lot of discussion about the corridor and what's going to happen later on and understanding, you know, that's part of something that's still a variable and we're always saying that. But what I found fascinating about this is that permits were down a little bit when it came to multifamily housing. And not a little bit, but by a third in the past, you know, almost in the past couple of years. Half from two years ago, that's a lot in multifamily housing when it comes to permitting. And so, which typically will yield a higher student yield. And so, I'm not sure what that's going to mean to us, but to know that the single-family housing is still very robust in permitting is good news. And so, I think that that's at least stabilizing out there. That birth rate in decline, we'll continue to monitor to see, but why, then the next thing I want to show you, though, is the, on the historical enrollment piece, is that, you know, you were in decline, last year you were at 30,503 and that's what I want to look at, is last year's data, kind of. In that, you know, look at that kindergarten enrollment and go across and you see it's, you know, what, 20, is it 2593? And as we, and thinking about this year's enrollment and going down, or, you know, we projected that to be about 2,700 students or 5,700, or 2,700 students. And that's, you know, but what it was doing was it was looking at the survival ratio and the historic survival ratio and how that has been effective in the last 10 years. So, this is what I'm going to show you, is the grade progression on this one. If you look at that birth decay and you look across the board, 72, 73, 72, 71, 76, count anomaly, 71, 71, then a 3% decline. Now, right away, a 3% decline in that survival ratio on 2,700 students is, you know, we just, you just start to do the math. So, I mean, we're already talking about a 70 or 80 student decline just in that survival ratio. That is, we hope is an anomaly. We don't know. I mean, because it's a one-year piece of data. You can see it even falls outside kind of the standard deviation rate. So, which is, again, which tells me it's probably an anomaly to go down, but the consistency of when students are born at that 70%, and we have talked about this before, you've been very consistent there. And so, this year automatically hits us at an 80 or 90 clip just by doing that. I'm not saying this to cover anything, but the bottom line is, is there's probably no software out there to catch something like that. And so, you're not sure what it could be, there are, I mean, there's a thousand different reasons. It could be deployment, it could be reassignment, it could be, I mean, when you live in this area or you live in Jacksonville, you live in Philadelphia, those towns suffer from that. And so, we see that that could possibly be that. But the other thing I wanted to point out, as you look through this, is that grade to grade, we still fall in that mid, that low to mid 90s when it comes to, you know, grade level progression. There's got to, and there's actually, you see improvement as you walk through these. If you spend some time in this, you'll either go blind or you'll learn a lot. Because you can go through this and you can see areas where we are retaining students more, okay? But there's still grade levels that we lose students. We'd like to see those progression ratios in the mid 90s to the mid to high 90s. That is a more stable enrollment there. Now, I'm going to take you to the next page, which is going to tell us a story, which is going to tell us actually a great story. If you look at, across the board, the 8 to 9 ratio, again, you're always going to see that 8 to 9 ratio be a lot higher than the rest. And the reason for that is because ninth grade credit hours or whatever it is, a lot of students by that October, you get a higher, when they get to high school, they're not technically classified as a sophomore 10th grader, but that's made up. And so, you'll see that, that eighth grade to 10th grade enrollment is a more comparable number. And so, then you see this big drop. So, everybody thinks, "Oh, my gosh, we're losing kids really from ninth grade to 10th grade." And that's probably not the case. But here's what I'm saying, this is what I really want to point to, is when you look at that 11th and 12th grade and you see those 100% pluses in the last several years, what that means is that getting to 11th grade, the remediation and the retention is working. So, we are catching kids up, but if we can get them to 11th grade with the remedial work that we do when students are behind in credit hours, when you're doing that, you get them there, they're going to graduate.
So, you're saying fewer dropouts?
If we can get them there.
If we can get them there.
Yeah. If we can, if we can get that ninth to 11th grade to stay consistent, what is evidentiary to me is that that program works. And especially in the last few years, you see that big jump from 91 to 103, something's working.
And you recall, we've talked about some of that bottlenecking that occurred at ninth grade around the credits piece and that's the work that we're reviewing and looking at in terms of moving from those partial credits, half credits, annual to full year credits so that we can move kids along differently and how we think about the SOL provision with that. Because a lot of that happened at a point in time where I think the thought was, we needed to ensure that students were attaining the number of SOL verified credits that we needed. So, we have kids who have passed all the courses for ninth, 10th grade, but they're still considered a ninth grade because they may be lacking the number of verified SOL ensure that students were attaining the number of SOL verified credits that we needed. So we have kids who have passed all the courses for ninth, tenth grade, but they're still considered a ninth grade because they may be lacking the number of verified SOL credits. So we're rethinking all of that as part of, and what's the right way to move students along. So all of that's that work that we've been talking about, that we've been focused on.
So, so really quick, that's why I love to see that eleventh and twelfth always be at a hundred and five, hundred and six, hundred and ten. Those are great numbers, when I, when I think about those kind of things.
Okay. Can I paraphrase for just a second to make sure that I'm clear?
Please, yeah, absolutely.
So if we look at grade progression, twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, we look at eight to nine.
Correct.
What that number is saying is that from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, we were able to a hundred and thirty-nine percent of kids transitioned from eight to nine.
Okay, so, so here's what's, here's what happens, is that we'll just put it on, we'll put it on, we'll just say there's a hundred kids that progress. That's easiest way to do it. So eighth grade, I have a hundred kids that go to ninth grade. After ninth grade, those current ninth graders that were supposed to be tenth graders, there's still thirty-nine of those kids that don't have enough credit hours to be really declared a tenth grader.
All right.
So it's not necessarily that, and on the other side, the hundred and thirty-nine to sixty-eight percent
Yes.
doesn't mean we're losing thirty-two percent of kids.
Right.
That's just the number, because those thirty-nine kids that got held in that ninth grade category because of credit classification is exactly why you see the sixty-eight.
And then anyone who is successful with that then could jump to tenth to eleventh the next year. So the number gets skewed a little bit by that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure I'm really clear.
So again, the, the really good news, again, if you look at like the sixty-eight to seventy-one, means that
Right.
you got a gain. You kept more kids even when you got them back. So I got, which is, again, an important thing to see, is that when I see the ninth, the tenth, when I see that nine, ten, and ten, eleven, when I see that number go, when I see it go down, so if I look at, so two years earlier, sixty-eight to sixty-seven, that means we did have a dropout. In some way, shape, or form, for some reason. But when I see now the sixty-six to sixty-seven, now the improvement to sixty-eight to seventy-one, once again, something is happening with credit recovery that's working.
Okay.
So, you, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, is there a, a raw number parallel to this representation?
There is. So when, we're going to deliver the full report to you guys, so in, in the draft form, and it has the raw numbers for you too. Yeah, so you can see those. And it'd be good to see those, because these charts tell such a big story, and I think that when people see them, they just kind of blow by the page, because it's so much to see. But if you really dig in, and when you see the raw numbers next to them, I think what you'll see is something that you're going to, I think, I, I see some positives here, and, yeah.
So I just, I just want to reiterate to make, make sure that we all understand too, the declining enrollment that we see, we have, is largely due to declining birth rates. And we're seeing through this data that we are retaining our students better.
Yes.
So that's something that, you know, I want to be sure, you know, a lot of times people are, you know, you hear the declining enrollment is due to our academic programming.
Exactly.
Which is something that I think we all need to work hard on making sure is not the message that's going out there.
I had a chance last week at the East Ocean View Civic League to deliver that exact message, because, you know, I talk about the declining enrollment, it's not about us losing the kids, that we still educate about eighty-five to eighty-seven percent of school-aged children. But I talk about, what was it, four carrier groups we lost?
Mm-hmm.
Four, four carrier groups, and unless those are backfilled, that's one piece. And I also talked about the declining birth rates. So again, in those public forums of the opportunity to dispel the myth that people are abandoning us, that's not the case. We are not having as many children.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, and I, this, and I kind of rolled through this slide really quick. This is our, this is the, the block group analysis of growth and decline. But if you look at the five to eighteen, which is typical school age, and if, if I look at the five-year projection, in the five to eighteen, it's only showing about a five-hundred-person growth in five years. That's, that's not on you. School board does not control the age of people.
Right.
And so we can't, so what it means obviously is that, is that y'all are getting older, because you live in Norfolk, I don't live in Norfolk. But, but what it means is you are aging here. And probably at a more rapid pace than birth. And so, and so what we see, and even in this number, compounded with the birth rate, is that you are, you are going to be controlled by demographic, and the demographic makeup of who you are as a city. Now, there are things that can change that. Obviously, a city can, yeah.
I was going to say, the city's focused on attracting the millennial
Yep.
and Generation Z and all of that. I mean, the, the design and the planning around is about how do you bring those folks that are in, even though they may be later starting families, but the idea that they would be coming in with the goal of starting families and transitioning into the schools.
Well, and, and the way the city, the way the city develops and, 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 you know, regenerates itself too. Mike shared with me a conference, an employment conference he went to at Virginia Tech, where architect firms and design firms were there to attract students. And what was the first question they were asking?
Where are you from?
Where are you from? It's not, what do you do, how big's your company? And the key component that Mike derived out of it was, can I walk to where I work? And so they love the DCs, they love the New Yorks, they love, and they don't love them necessarily because they're the big city, but they love them because they can walk to work, they can, and look, that generation of, of, we've got, I've got three GIS analysts that are this generation. And I, I had a long conversation with one of them, and he said, look, we don't have a dream of necessarily owning a house. He goes, where am I going to come up with fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars to put a down payment on a house? We're not going to be that generation. We're not going to be, but we're not going to have three cars in our driveway. We're not going to, we're going to be walkers and single riders and ride shares, and that's, that's that group. And Mike experienced the very same thing when he went to see these.
I've got four millennials that work at Virginia.
In Norfolk, yeah.
Now, the question is, they, they come in as millennials, but then don't they, when they start inheriting their parents' states, does, does that change? Do they say, okay, now I can buy the house, and now I can be a family?
Yeah.
So it's, we, because the narrative is, is that the millennials come here because they can walk downtown,
Yeah.
and then once they get ready to, to have kids, then they move out to the suburbs.
Well, and I think that's community planning of that diversity level. You know, how do you have what, what that group wants now, the walkability, the livability piece? But then how do you also have that outgrowth of small, quaint neighborhoods and everything else that are around there? So that's the design that, that communities are doing.
Yeah, and I
I share with the board that I didn't understand this until I went to Charlotte last summer. And I finally got it, because I couldn't, you know, I couldn't understand the Waterside District, I said it's a ginormous food court. So, you, you know, I, I just wasn't getting it. I know, I said it out loud, but, but just like, I, I flew through Atlanta Airport this week, and they've even changed the seating and the food courts there, because it's this communal seating.
Go to Philadelphia, same thing.
Yeah, same thing. And so, like you said, it
Well, again, and, yeah.
I, I guess that was finally my acknowledgement. I'm not one of those that I finally crossed the bar age-wise. But, but I'm, I'm getting it now. And so it's that idea that if they like the community for some of what they offer, if we build the other pieces that they want when they make that transition, then they'll stay in that community.
And number one is education.
That's right. That's it. That's it.
No question. And so, so those environments that we're looking at, the investments we're making, the planning we're doing, there's, you're, it's the whole picture. It's what you said earlier. It's not just step one. This has such a big, and you're, you're going to see in my other stuff, there's so much that goes into this. So the enrollment projection actually continues to show this, a continued decline. But once again, I, I would suggest that it's not going to be as rapid, because we're, we're retaining students more, not, not to say that it's not. I think that, so our kindergarten enrollment, actually the projection is about two hundred lower than we projected last year. So we really tried to force it down a little bit, because there's no way we can not do that. But when I look at the numbers, again, this is conditionally formatted, so you see where the, the big numbers are. That big number in ninth grade, we're not going to replace. So that twenty-five hundred number, but if you look at kindergarten this year, it's twenty-five hundred.
Is that why that's highlighted?
Yeah, so, so you see in the pink, but the red, the dark red is your bubble.
That's the bubble.
So you're going to see, there's some higher numbers, and you see those numbers cool off again, because, again, we're going to get those low birth rates that push through in those next couple of years. The problem is, is we can't, unless we attract kids to come into the district that aren't currently here, those lower numbers just push through, and there's no way I can push them out.
Right.
A ten-year of low birth, there's no way to push twelve years of data out in ten years. And so that's why you see that blue across the board. Got one big class here, and after that, we're not going to see the numbers. And so that has a big impact on high school capacity planning, has a big impact on how we realign boundaries, and how we get the right feeder patterns, both geographically and programmatically. So all of that comes into play when we look at these numbers. Again, I get, I always get frustrated with that people take a number like this and just do one thing with it. These numbers allow us to do so many things in planning. And so we really want to pay attention to it. And that's why ninety-two kids off in those grades one through twelve is an important number for us. We are getting the number so far down to the, to less error that we can plan better. And so now that we got Dennis's and our numbers mixed and really in sync, we, we have ideas of what we can do. And I think we're just narrowing it down even more. So I'm excited. I'm excited, not that you're declining, but I think it's, I, Dennis and I go back and forth on this, but I don't think that declines so rapid anymore. So, okay, so the, the two recommendations, I'll get onto those, Camp Allen and Sewell's Point, boundary change. Again, the recommendation was boundary change from Sewell's Point to Camp Allen to do some relief and provide utilization for, relief for Sewell's Point. Understanding that the building is in phase construction, and that we're not going to be able to accommodate that enrollment until it is completed. And so we're going to change the recommendation to the boundary change to occur in the fall of twenty twenty. The anticipated completion date is spring of twenty twenty. In the meantime, there is a strategy of pre-K and kindergarten
No, just pre-K.
Just pre-K, my bad. That should not, I'll take that off before we final, final, finalize. To take pre-K and just relocate so we have the space. We did see some growth at Camp Allen this year, which again, was not anticipated. So what we're doing, again, is, remember, we have every student geocoded back now several years, is we're trying to see where these students are coming from. And so are we seeing any sort of just displacement in certain areas and they're moving to different areas? Are the students, new students coming in? And so we're trying to figure out if, again, this one-year spike was an anomaly, or is it going to be the trend up in that area?
Can you just pause there for a moment and just re-explain exactly what you're, what we're saying is going to occur?
As you recall, the, Camp Allen is the fifth of the PPEA schools, and the Department of Defense is covering a large portion of that. And so we needed to adjust boundaries to address the percentage of military-connected families in that school, as well as to relieve some of the overcrowding at Sewell's Point, and to take advantage of the enrollment space at Camp Allen. Camp Allen was originally designed to be done in phases. So next year this time, Phase One would have been completed. And there's a set number of classrooms that will be available, not the entire building. In order to accommodate, so the, the original recommendation back in the fall was to begin in the fall of eighteen, phasing in this new boundary, perhaps with kindergarten students into Camp Allen. Because of the unanticipated enrollment increases, when we looked at the number of available classrooms that will be completed in Phase One, we, we realized we couldn't bring in anybody else, because we're, we're going to be tight, very, very tight with the space that's available to accommodate students within the existing boundaries. So they, as I share with the board, the, the goal is to defer the full boundary changes, any boundary shifts for Sewell's Point and Camp Allen until the fall of twenty twenty, when the second phase of the school will be completed, I mean, it will be at its capacity. But that will occur like this time of the year in twenty twenty. Not a good time to start changing kids out of school, so we just make it effective that fall. But in order to accommodate Phase One, we are relocating pre-K to Willoughby, so that students in K through five would be one unit in that building. Yes, families may have a connection with the school. They could have a child who would potentially be in pre-K there and have a fourth grader or something. But most children and families don't necessarily have that, I've been in that school, connection. So with the available space at Willoughby due to, it, it's solely serving pre-K now, and proximity to that is, is not that great, you know, from, from Camp Allen, that until the fall of twenty twenty, beginning the fall of eighteen, all pre-K would be housed at Willoughby for Camp Allen. Beginning the fall of twenty twenty, pre-K would be coming back into the school, because the entire building is finished.
How many students are we talking about?
I'm looking at Jamie, how many pre-K classes, is it?
Yeah.
Pre-classes? But again, the way that these phases were done pre-us, we don't have enough classroom, we have just enough classroom space, that means just enough. We're repurposing some space in order to make it happen for K through five. And so with the original goal of thinking, well, we could begin to phase folks into this zone until the building was complete, we couldn't do that once we saw that enrollment.
I, I think the division did an excellent job of working with the school to go through the, the options of how to make sure there's enough space. Options such as, I mean, every option was explored, from library to music space, but the core decision was that we don't impact K-five program. And that is, that is, that's why this move makes sense, to do this. Now, what we're going to look at for this board to make, to approve on this one, is that we're going to take one more look at this boundary change that we've recommended, just to assure that that would be the boundary change that would happen. Just making sure that, you know, everything is, we're going to relook at the geocoded students again, we're going to see what the growth patterns are. You know, we're, you know, now working with the city to see some of those development things that are happening. So we're going to make sure that that boundary is the right boundary for you to go forward on.
So that will come back to us
Yes.
within about a month or so
Yep.
for, for, you know, board consideration and all of that, yeah. So that any final action can be taken no later than the June meetings.
And that'll be effective in the fall?
Fall of twenty twenty. But you all asked me to go ahead and bring it back so we can educate parents and understand, and families that when they make certain housing choices or whatever else, that beginning the fall of twenty twenty, this address will be attending Camp Allen, or this other address will be attending Sewell's Point.
When will the pre-K students go from Sewell's Point?
Pre-K this fall.
This fall, that's
This fall, because
Well, that's for clarity.
Right. Pre-K, the fall of eighteen, all other changes, the fall of twenty.
That's because the school is going to open mid-year rather than?
Right. Both Phase One opens mid-year, and the final of, mid-year of nineteen, school year. The final school, our project will be complete mid-year of twenty twenty school year. And so it's not a good time to transition everybody in the middle. So we, you know, you would have had pre-K babies that had been at the school for a semester almost. And then we would be talking about shifting them not only to a new building, but to a brand-new building, new transportation. So we felt it was better to start pre-K at Willoughby in the fall and not have them as part of that mid-school year transition, because K through five will be transitioning from the existing building into Phase One that will be complete about January, end of January, early February of next year.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure, sure.
Okay, now, in the Lake Taylor Middle School, Fair Lawn, Popular Halls conversion, the recommendation was a conversion of Lake Taylor Middle School to a pre-K eight grade configuration, consolidating Fair Lawn and Popular Halls into a pre-K eight. And then with the repurpose of Fair Lawn, what that repurpose is, it's still a viable building for some use. You know, understanding now, I, I want to make this one very, very clear, that, because I think we're fielding calls already, that this isn't for the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year. This would not be next year. Our recommendation is implementation to push back to the nineteen twenty year. One of the reasons for that is, you know, certainly just education of the community. The second one is, is that we're, after doing, again, going in to make sure programmatically the building would accommodate it, there will still be, you know, one more bigger class in that eighth grade class that it will have to move out of that to accommodate enough student enrollment for that building, the capacity for that building. So twofold, the reason we're making the recommendation to push that back a year is for capacity and program reasons, possibly also looking at hopefully some dollars being invested in that building for some upgrades to accommodate the pre-K program, if we can, so, because one of the things we're going to be looking at is capital projects and maintenance projects. But the other thing is making sure that, you know, we're working with the community through the year for transition.
And to the point of, you know, something we've been talking about very publicly, would then be the opportunity to take offline a building that has a poorer facility condition index. And it allows the board to think about where do you want to make your capital investments as you begin doing those priorities, which Trace is also going to talk about in a minute.
And on this, the work with the And on this, the work with the uh, ed spec, with that ed spec, educational planning team in terms of the clarity around the boundary and attendant zone is still-
Yes.
-being developed as well, correct?
That is correct.
And, and then, I guess, as part of this then, we know, as Dr. Boone just mentioned, um, the facility condition index and the maintenance needs at Poplar Halls. So, as part of this uh, pushback, then I guess there's also going to have to be some conversation around maintenance and support at Poplar Halls for another, for another year in order to, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Ms. Ingram and Mr. Johnson and I have already communicated that the assessments and things that, that we can do. Some, uh, one of the instances deals with um, some interior wall conditions and things, but those are driven by the roof. And so, the question is, how much do we put into the roof if the board may approve relocating students from that building into a year? But we are working on the health and safety issues uh, around that and making sure that we have a plan to support it currently and then going forward. This too will be a recommendation that will be coming to the board. Yes.
Right. Okay, so other planning initiatives, um, okay, so again, complete comprehensive planning requires a lot of looks at a lot of, a lot of different things. And so, first one is um, is high school programming initiatives. Working with um, with Dr. Rogers, Dr. Coleman about um, their team working on um, high school specialty programs and how that informs us. You know, the, um, the pivot of the, of the exploration of CTE at Booker T. Washington um, actually threw us a little curveball, a little bit, but that's okay. It's not a big curveball, it's just a little curveball. Um, nothing that hadn't been in my head five years ago, so it was something I've been thinking about.
Can we share it there?
I know, so, um, so anyway, but the exploration of what that means, but um, this to be, really be informed, because again, this is about an entire high school solution to this. Um, that, that if the CTE STEAM program comes to fruition at Booker T. Washington, what does that mean programmatically and condition of the building? But also, what does that mean to Lake Taylor? What's that mean about our investment to Lake Taylor programmatically? Um, condition-wise, how do we make that investment? Because again, the idea isn't that we throw so much attention to one building that another one gets ignored. We've got to bring them all to the top. And so, the work that, um, that we have worked together, uh, we've sat together and, and worked through the initiatives that they've already presented to you and then the, the realignment of some things through direction of the board to inform us to make good decisions on high school facility and realignment. Part of this is really looking at some of that alignment too, is that the decisions of um, that don't escape us is committed boundary to a district-wide program versus, you know, do you open it up and how do you do that? Um, we've been very clear and continue to be very clear that right now, in the current condition of facilities, this district cannot handle its high school enrollment with four buildings. You need five buildings in their current state, that is no question about that. Um, you don't have enough capacity to do that. And so, um, and we're not going to overcrowd buildings to the extent that they're going to be not useful either. So, but we have to make the investment in to, you know, the buildings like, you know, the, obviously the most underutilized buildings, Booker T. Washington. The investment of specialty programs into that building to attract students division-wide is a key element to what we do and how we plan. Not only that, but also looking at how they're fed through, um, through balanced, through balanced boundaries and how that works too. So, making sure that, um, you know, ideally, we, we kind of look and see how really the, the shift for us, we look at it almost in a clockwise look at how the district is made up socio-economically to balance that. Um, and so, to the point of Fair Lawn and, and Poplar Halls, that, you know, the current state of those boundaries may change a little bit when we look at really what the boundary changes will be because of high school feeders and how we do that. And so, there might be a sliver that either move into that or come out of that because it's adjacent to the neighborhood that makes sense for that. Um, and so, this one actually comes to play in a lot of different ways now. So, by June, what we're going to have is a high school recommendation for you, informed by a lot of different things, um, including Dr. Coleman's work and the, the specialty planning initiative. Um, we will have next month, this, this look at Booker T. for you to make sure that if that's the possibility, what's the comparison of Lake Taylor? So, that's where we're working toward on those. Um, obviously, Maury, you've heard about. Um, it's not that we're ignoring the other two schools. They need some capital investments or some maintenance investments too, which goes into kind of that priority of capital projects. Um, so, but we're paying attention to all buildings. Um, but programmatically, those three kind of come out in this, in this process that we're doing. Um, pre-K placement, um, I'm working with, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
In the discussion of Booker T. Washington and the STEAM program blended with now the CTE shift, um, we just had a, you know, a really good discussion about all of the meetings and things that we have in place for Maury.
Question the process.
And I, okay, I just, where, where does the community input and desire come in?
Complete, be with you on that, and I'm going to turn it over to her, because we are-
Sure.
It's, it's part of our everyday discussion on this.
Okay.
Doctor-
A similar process?
That Dr. Rogers and I um, talked about how do we bring the community, um, the whole community, because not only the Booker T. community, that the Conference of CTE High School is designed to be a community-wide, a district-wide option. And so, while the core infrastructure of the CTE High School has been developed over the last seven years, that won't shift. But what we will talk about is how we bring this to life in terms of the enrollment, the uh, connection to it and all of that. So, Dr. Rogers and I are in the process of mapping out a pro, a, a strategy that will uh, wrap the community and conversations around that. And so, we are working on that and we'll come back to the board with what that looks like. But we are in the planning stages of an, uh, community, school-based community effort around that.
Couple of questions. What was the curveball that was number one? And number two, have we made a decision in terms of, so it's still up in the air as opposed, whether or not it's Lake Taylor or Booker T.? Is that where we are?
Well, the curveball was that we had been planning for Lake Taylor High School for the last, I don't know how, since I think the vote that was taken in the spring of fifteen.
Yeah.
Twenty fourteen, fifteen. And so, the, the planning had been around Lake Taylor High School. So, the curveball was the, the introduction of perhaps considering Booker T. as that location. I interpreted the board's uh, nod for that as being consensus and so therefore, that Booker T. would be this, the host of the Conference of CTE School. So, that's the planning work that we've been doing since then. So, you recall, we had presented several options around how to address the boundaries for a Conference of CTE School housed at Lake Taylor High School. We have to go back and re, rethink those boundaries now with Booker T. being that, that area and also the impact of the St. Paul's Quadrant work. And while the public housing areas, if, if everything lines up that the city is trying to accomplish and the NRHA piece, you know, uh, NRHA has included um, the, the revitalization of that area in its annual plan to, to, to HUD. And you all saw that Secretary Bing Carson was here last week and had an opportunity to be part of that process. And so, we have to go back and rethink the mixed income, um, mixed purpose for that area and what it means for boundaries and potentials for students to be in that and how we think about the boundaries. So, that's why we have to go back and realign that work for the boundaries. But I understood the marching orders from the board was to make a pivot. My term that I said that night, to pivot to Booker T. serving that in terms of supporting the work in the St. Paul's and the, and the city's desire to have a very strong anchor school within that, that work.
I guess I didn't realize we voted on that, so.
So, that's, so the reason that I'm covering my bases is still, I still have the, the, like Taylor in mind. I do, because we have a plan out there, we have several options for you yet.
And I guess my concern is that, like Noel said, that whatever we do, that we go through the same process in terms of bringing the community, because they have expressed certain things. They've sent letters or whatever, so that we can address their concerns.
Some of the community has sent letters, and yeah, and I, and I think that's right. And that's why, again, as Dr. Rogers and I have started working on what a format will be for this, again, um, there will be some nuances and some differences in this process because of the core CTE work that has already been developed and, and strongly researched and embraced. And that's such as the IT pilot we started, so that part is in place. But how do we think about it serving the community, the addition of the arts piece? Because again, as you recall from the budget presentation, we included a diff, additional positions to make sure that the arts maintain, as almost as a description I used to the board during those workshop sessions, was a fifth pathway. We do have the four career tech pathways and the arts being a fifth one. And so, how we blend this. But yes, our intent is to, is to develop a process that will engage voices around this and so, we'll be coming back to the board with that. But a, again, if there's some readiness as to whether or not it's Booker T., I, I think I asked this question when it happened, when that conversation happened, is this the direction I'm supposed to go in? Because we've been investing a lot of time and effort and, and planning around this. I just want to make sure I'm doing what was the will of the board and not expecting another shift.
I just don't remember a vote, I just don't remember that.
What we, what we discussed was uh, asking the administration to work with the planning team on this very thing and to come back and give what those next, what those recommendations and next steps would look like. And part of that would also include having the community conversations and the input along that continuum. So, that's what we asked them to, to look at as far as an official vote. Um, I think we just did consensus at that time, so.
I don't even remember consensus. I remember the discussion, because we, we came in that day and we did a discussion. I just don't remember it all.
Yeah, well, I, I remember, because I remember very pointedly asking the question-
We went around.
Okay, do, are you asking me to put brakes on the Lake Taylor in order to develop the Booker T. piece, so?
So, I have a, are you, are you finished with your question? Since you brought it up, can you just, at the time that you had considered Booker T. as a site for the CTE originally, the board composition was different. Can you just kind of refresh us today what your thoughts were at that time?
Sure. And at the risk of getting a clandestine call from, I don't even know who to this day, does not stop talking about it.
Nobody believes me when I tell that story.
The weirdest call, no, wasn't anybody from the, it was a voice I'd never recognized. All I was told was never talk about it again, so. You know, my job takes me a lot of different places. At any rate, um, the, the thought process behind that was, and I knew that the, that, that the previous board had committed a lot of time and energy to research and development of why, where the decision was made. Um, but as I looked at kind of objectively at the time, considering a lot of different things, demographics, location, feeder patterns, um, condition of facility, um, potential partnership and relationship in the city to where it was. It just, to me, looking again, in the lens that I have, was more than just looking at, I'm going to pick that building because the site is bigger or better. And that's what it, I mean, and I know there was a lot more to that, but when I, when I heard that decision, actually, that's kind of what I concluded it to, was that they picked Lake Taylor because the site was better. Well, the site's better if you're looking at the building as it currently is today. If you haven't examined program implications, demographic implications, feeder pattern and, and socio-economic balance of, of how the school could work. Um, the partnership with, with Norfolk State with, I mean, those locations and the opportunities in that site allowed, and just the access of the roads. I mean, um, the central location of that building for access in that building, a lot of that made sense to me. And so, um, and I, and I know we discussed it a lot. And um, that, that's why again, I, I said it was a small curveball, because I've already given this a lot of thought, um, in our previous planning efforts, to look at why Booker T. could make a lot of sense for an anchor school right almost in the center of the demographic of the city. Um, so that's where I was then with that. Um, you know, come to the conclusion that Lake Taylor could work too, because we could provide a lot of opportunities. So, you, you make it work according to the initiative that's, that's developed there. Um, now-
Could, could I make a comment on that? Because I sat in the middle of that for years and, and it wasn't just as simplistic as, as you, as you say. And, and I, that's why I got to push back a little bit, because the reason that Lake Taylor was chosen amongst the fact that, that it was close to NTC. But the biggest reason is because it was close to the expressway, because at the time, it was going to be a regional school.
Right.
We were going to draw students from, the, the, the idea was to draw a regional school to get state of funding and, and state support. That's the only reason why I'm in favor of the pivot is because now it's become a Norfolk-centric school and, and that's not an issue. The Booker T. makes better sense in that, in that relation, so, you know, for different reasons.
My apologies, not to make it that simplistic, because that makes a lot of sense to me. And as I heard that, as I hear that, the location, NTC, all that makes a lot of sense to me, so.
But that was the, that was the reason behind it at that time.
Sure, okay.
Okay, but thank you for indulging me on that, because I've sat through a lot of meetings.
Well, the better educated I am about that, the better I can plan for this.
But didn't, I'm just going back to that study, but, but didn't they do a lot of consideration about the land? Because of what the facility, and again, I know program first and then facility. I'm just trying to go back, I thought-
I wasn't here, so let me, I, let me say it. I don't have to own it, so let me say it. The, the idea, the, there were goals that it appeared that Lake Taylor High School grounds would better meet both the, the internal and the external goals, as, as Brad said, that were for, designed for that school at that point. The only reason I knew about it is because that was during the time that the teams came to Worcester and sometimes we had conversations about how the school was selected. And um, so fast forward now to five years since, I guess, those conversations. Again, it's, it's how we are, there are some opportunities here with declining enrollment, with facility needs and everything else, and yet still having a strong commitment from the business compute, community to support this, that um, it, you know, it's just the right timing. It allows us to accomplish a lot there. But again, I was, the reason my early work was on Lake Taylor is because when I came in, that was what was on the plate and that's where I started, right.
Yeah, and you know, I'm not anti-CTE.
Oh, no.
I'm just looking at the broader picture in terms of some historical things that are concerns of the community. So, that's where I am with that.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I, I share those two. We, we talk about that a lot, because I, I believe it's important that this community is engaged in what will happen in their community. And so, whether it's the, the development of stronger partnerships with the university, um, you know, because I think that's critical. Um, you know, there's a lot of alumni that went right there to there. And so, we want to maintain that strong sense. I agree, I think that the community part to this is a critical element to making sure this is successful. Okay, other initiatives, um, Jamie Malinick and I have talked several times now about pre-K placement. You're gonna, you're gonna lose a grant here in a year and it has a net negative effect, um, but not horribly net negative effect. Um, but as we look forward in, in good facility planning, part of that is, you know, obviously, the education is a, is a board initiative that is a priority, because it has to be. And, but we want to make sure that we are aligning this program to make sense within our capital plan. And so, you know, we start, you know, it's, it's funny, we seem to be bookending our planning, that we're going to high schools and then we go to this pre-K. Um, so, we have, we've talked about different models. Um, whether do we find, do we find good models in some regional centers that center our resources better, um, but aren't necessary in the backyard? Or do we, do we still do schools, like every school gets something or? So, there's a lot of different models we can follow here. And, um, and then also, the continued collaboration with your partners in early education delivery and how that impacts them. And so, um, as we look at facilities down the road that we may use or might, may not use, how do those come into play? Um, so, we want to make sure that this is aligning the right way. The net loss of, of pre-K classrooms that's coming in, again, it's not a, it's not a whole lot, but it has an impact on where kids go. Um, so, we find this, this planning effort, especially in the comprehensive plan, to be a great opportunity to make sure we're being proactive. Much like changing a boundary two years before it happens is important, because everybody knows. So, as this is a year out from this program coming, this grant coming off, we're going to be better prepared to make sure that our pre-Ks are in the right places.
And I was, I know the board is, I see questions on your face. So, there, there are two things. We're scheduled to lose six of the Virginia VPI classrooms this coming budget, beginning July one. The second year of what, uh- The second year of what Tracy is addressing is the fact that the federal government ends VPI plus in one school year. So those are those two shifts. But you recall that you approved the recommendation in your budget to City Council, the creation of polything mixed income pre-K classes. So that's still on the table to be able to address some of the VPI laws. But in a year, VPI plus will sunset just because that grant. We, Jamie hasn't heard anything about any extension of that and we don't know that, don't think that that's going to be the case. But at this point, this whole pre-K discussion is based on that grant sunsetting also.
Let me ask a question. How many classes do we have for VPI plus?
I have to look at Jamie.
So for the 2018-19 school year, we're going down to from 11 to eight VPI plus. And that, does that include the six that we've, that we've?
Different grants, different grants. So six, so that's nine classrooms down.
So, but again.
Yeah, and remember, we do have, look at that birth rate piece. You remember last year I was beyond myself. Doesn't mean we couldn't utilize all of those classes.
I know, I mean, I'm just, yeah.
But you gotta go back to the birth rate, you know, what is, what do those pre-K numbers look like potentially of kids we could serve? Absolutely. I know we could serve and fill those classes, but we have had some challenges in the last two to three years in filling all of our pre-K slots. And so how do we navigate and do all of that, so?
And that's where I was going to go is that you don't fill all the pre-K seats you have. And part of the strategy, they are, but also.
Right, and so again, that's the opportunity. We gain some additional flexibility. The state allows us to use 15% flexibility where we can insert some local rules, excuse me, within those existing programs. But you've taken the step to begin our own design that doesn't necessarily have those parameters. And of course, we'll have the conversation around budget and what the city finally approves and how we get there. But that's the work that's also coming, what would be the criteria, so that's work yet to come. But the idea is that with the loss, we gain some flexibility. We may not have the money to fully support it, but what does it look like? And if we try it with three classrooms rather than the six to see if we can make that happen, then we can begin to see what the future landscape may look like.
The 15% flexibility is only for the state funded because that's.
That's correct.
Okay, so then obviously, capital priority, the capital projects, you know, HBA's work on the condition analysis has helped us better analyze where we can direct funds for improvement, condition improvement. With my understanding of a little influx coming in from the city to be directed at some maintenance projects and capital projects, that's good news, so we can use that information to do that.
If all, if the sun, moon, and stars line up and prayers work, then you might get some of that.
So, and you know what, I gotta believe that the information that we're providing them and the better information year by year is really helping that. I do, I just believe it is. So that study that Mike was able to accomplish served well. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna pay itself back very rapidly, so I'm glad that that became a part of what we do now. Of course, utilization balance is always in our queue. I'm not giving up on the neighborhood choice concept that we introduced a couple of years ago because I still think there's validity to it. I think there's ways to balance enrollment, balance socioeconomic, balance neighborhoods with that idea. And so we're going to continue to explore how we fit that into this comprehensive master plan. And then this one, what we've learned is that every time we make a decision, Bob Kleinfeld comes to me and says, I need 16 more buses for that. So, and what I've learned is he's right. Is that we can't just make planning decisions without understanding the full ramification of what we do. And so I have spent more time than I ever thought I would in transportation, working with Mr. Kleinfeld and his team, and become a whole lot smarter about what this means. So talking about staggers, making sure that staggers are better balanced, that we are utilizing bus drivers and our resources better. The board has already taken a step to make bus drivers compensated to the best in Hampton Roads. That's a great start, but it's, but that's kind of half of the battle. When we've got large times of sitting between hours or not making hours because of these staggers, or when we have buses that are late because they can't even get their route done in time for the next stagger, we've got to reanalyze that. That has an impact of what we do in planning. And so we've worked several things, but the obvious impacts on athletics. So we've talked about, okay, so we called coaching, we said, hey, what if we did this? Well, middle schools do this and they gotta get there on time because we don't have any lights at these fields. All of that comes into play. And so to make a, to make a change to something like that, but means you have to put in lights at a middle school that costs $500,000, doesn't do us any good. And so we have to consider that. But the other thing we're going to start talking about is school start time. Because that's going to be a critical part of how this works within our comprehensive plan, especially if we're talking about specialty programs at high schools in a more robust way. To give you the best example, just the Lake Taylor Middle School conversion to K-8. He showed us the analysis. It was going to take 12 more, was it 12 or 16 more buses in order to accommodate the K-8 because of the middle school stagger time for middle school students. And so it was going to take that many more buses to accommodate that. Well, that threw flashes out there because then it's an operational, day-to-day recurring cost to you. So we need to figure out, first of all, if it still remains a four-stagger system, how we get bookend the most use of buses and not have the most use of buses, most use of buses, least use of buses, and then some use of buses, because that doesn't work. And so Mr. Kleinfeld and his team and I are working on different options to present to Dr. Boone to kind of explore that and to figure out what the implications of that. Never an easy discussion when we start talking about start time. That's, and I've shared this with the team all day. When you're talking about like school start time, I don't care if it's a five-minute shift. You're going to make a third of the people mad, a third of the people happy, and a third just don't care. So we just kind of get ready for it, but we have to have the discussion because I think that there is huge inefficiencies in both resources and financial when it comes to how we do bus.
And most importantly, the health of our students, not so much about transportation.
That is, and that's a critical part of this.
That should be the first and foremost.
That is first and foremost, but we get the collateral impact.
Right, no, I get that.
Yeah, so some, we have to find the messaging that works all across all areas. And so I think there's something in that a lot because again, we approached it, you know, as we continue to talk about what are our efficiencies. Can't ignore that if we change staggers and look at school times, we can create some efficiencies within our system. That's important. And, but how we select the staggers is what gets to the school's start time that gets to the point about the health issues and the focus of children. So changing the staggers addresses the efficiency. How we, what recommendations we make to the board as to whether our high school students start school later versus the elementary students is where we get at that health piece. So that's where that second level of choice and conversation comes in.
So we have a DLT meeting in a couple of weeks that we're going to present to Dr. Boone at DLT a couple of the options that we've explored on four and three-stagger stuff, just to get that ball rolling. But we think that we can come to some pretty good conclusions by June for this, for you guys. That way, again, not being able to implement everything, but we could make some small adjustments in the coming year that can prove some efficiencies. And then if there's something bigger to move for the 1920 year, best we do it now. So I'm actually pretty excited about this, more excited than I ever thought I'd be about transportation.
I'm excited. Are you saying that you are looking at the later start times as a part of that, what you bring to Dr. Boone?
So timeout, here we go again.
No, we're looking at everything.
Let me be clear.
Tracy used the term, we can make some tweaks to improve efficiencies for the 18-19 school year. And again, he's going to vet some options with the district leadership team in two weeks that will drive the recommendations that we bring back to the board that will be both tweaks for 18-19 and perhaps the full monty for 1920.
Which we think would be a great step-by-step opportunity for us.
So we're, we're beyond our time.
Yep.
And we have had on the agenda the CTE, the existing CTE plan discussion and update. And I'd just like to ask the board's indulgence, because I'd like to just come back for a moment with Mr. Richter being here to the Booker T. piece and the connection to the CTE and what we feel we have asked the administration to do. Because I want to make sure that we are all clear and comfortable and on the same page so that we can communicate where we are, where we're going as a team. So I'd just like to try to step through my assessment and I'd like for you all to correct me or redirect me as appropriate. So last year, when we had the conversation around the specialty update, when we asked the administration to come back and at a mid-year retreat, give us an assessment, evaluation, just have a discussion around our specialty programs. We received that update at the same time that the educational planning had been ongoing. And part of what we found or affirmed as part of that, that we had three pretty robust high school specialty programs at Maury, Norview, and Granby. We found that we had some gaps with Booker T. and Lake Taylor. But at that time, we knew that Lake Taylor was also being viewed as the comprehensive CTE school. And so that kind of was its specialty in addition to what was already underway with the military science program. The board and administration agreed that we needed to do some robust upgrades when it came to the specialty program, in particular with Booker T. and Lake Taylor. And one of the things that came out of the Booker T. conversation at that time was, what do we do to enhance the, my words, you all can correct me, but the fine arts program, the arts program that was there.
Which was their original specialty.
Which was their original specialty. So we had the administration working in on that in that regard and we got updates on that along the way. And in the current proposed budget, part of what is being recommended in terms of staff support for the fine arts program is in there. Although if you remember back in January, Mr. Coleman came and showed us results from the 40-member team that's been working on this. And there were several recommendations that they had in there in terms of that program and other specialty programs. In the budget, what came, in the proposed budget, what came forth was a subset of those recommendations. So we know that there are still additional things we want to accomplish budget-wise in order to get all of those specialty programs at the level that we said we agreed. In December, I come to the board and asked about us doing the STEAM component at Booker T. So you still had the work that was going on with the fine arts. But we were also looking at, could we add this STEAM component which would have provided the connectivity to Norfolk State, the cybersecurity, the competitiveness? And what we were hearing was a demand in the workforce, which did have some impact on the comprehensive CTE school because one of its academies was dealing with that cybersecurity component. Then in January, in all these ways, there were conversations going on with the city all around the St. Paul's area. Because just as we've talked about today, the impact of enrollment declines, one of the things that we are aware of and that we've talked about frequently is that part of what has impacted the change in enrollment at Booker T. Washington High School had to do with the redevelopment that took place in Broad Creek. So that change in that, from how many units you had in their boundary to what's there today had more impact on the enrollment, the overall enrollment at Booker T. Than anything dealing with specialty programs or anything like that. So in January, in the ongoing conversations with the business community in the city, where this minor curve ball, so to speak, came in, which I really think is less of a curve ball and is more of a slow-pitched softball coming down at us, gave an opportunity to do several things, which I think is an opportunity for the home run, is the focus has been on, or some focus has been on upgrade of a facility at Booker T. and improvements that needed to be there. Upgrades on programmatic activities that needed to take place there. As well as recognizing that Booker T. and all of our high schools need to be strong, attractive, top-notch programs in schools, just as we have anywhere else in the Commonwealth. But because we knew we had this equity gap, that this gave us an opportunity to continue with the fine arts, add on the, as right now, the consideration of the CTE, best CTE in the Commonwealth of Virginia, comprehensive school. Provide in the proposed budget right now, support for the building out of the fine arts program that aligns with some of the upgrades that have been going on in the building around the auditorium and so forth. And have this connectivity this time so that whatever is happening with the St. Paul's quadrant area, that we don't have a scenario to the extent that we can avoid it where housing activities are happening separate and distinct from school activities. So we don't find ourselves five years or so many years down the line trying to figure out what happened at the school as a result of what happened outside of the school boundaries in terms of housing. So the opportunity that we have before us is best CTE comprehensive program in the state at Booker T. Existing activities that have been going on with the existing CTE program that Ms. Goshen has given us multiple commercials on, have the network begin to align with Booker T. as it was previously being aligned with Lake Taylor. And the opportunity, just as we heard with the Maury discussion, to have community collaborations and conversations. So just as we're talking about alignments with EVMS and so forth with Maury, we have the opportunity to have alignment with Norfolk State, Virginia Wesleyan, Tyler Community College, and business communities, ADP, and all the folks that have been involved in these, what's the clusters called, that's been ongoing. So there really is this opportunity. And what we're trying to now fit in within this window of opportunity that we have is how to have those constructive community conversations that now have shifted. Because as Mr. Richter said, we actually have been having seven years of community conversations. They're now just being focused and oriented around Booker T. to align with the opportunity that exists in St. Paul's so that with all things aligned, you get a win-win with an attractive development in the St. Paul's area that aligns with all the things we talked about, Gen Z and every other gen. And also be able to make sure that it supports this robust, attractive, programmatic effort at Booker T. Washington that's driven by the content and the demands of the workforce that then aligns with whatever the building configuration that needs to take place in order for this to occur. So that's my kind of recap of it. And if I'm off or if there's any questions about it, I just want us to take a moment and be clear. Because I know we get a lot of questions about, well, when are you going to do this and when are you going to do that? But just as in some cases, we don't know yet, you know, I think it's okay to say in some instances, we don't know yet. And that's where we're going to be working with the community and other partners in order to determine it. But what we do know is the board has committed to the existing upgrade of the arts program at Booker T. The board is committed to figuring out this alignment around the CTE in collaboration with the business community. The board is committed to the ongoing programmatic work around our CTE offerings, even as we determine where the physical location may be. The proposed budget has resources in there to address some of what's being proposed because we couldn't get to all of it yet. But it's clearly been laid out thus far, some of the recommendations, at least from the staff and administration, around what we need to do to get to the ultimate goal that we're trying to achieve. around what we need to do to get to the ultimate goal that we're trying to achieve. And this is a window of, of opportunity, uh, and really based upon what the citizens feel in terms of what's in the city manager's proposed budget, that then provides the additional resources, both on the programmatic side and on the capital side, to move forward. So, that's what we've lined up. Uh, so.
Uh, and let me just say that, uh, I, in, in terms of everything that you've said, I don't disagree, except the process. And, and, you know, in turn, hearing from the community. The cart before the horse, and they felt like they were not a part of the entire process. So, just like with the Maury situation and the dates and the times and all of that, I, I just think that in all fairness, that we listen and we give them the same kind of opportunities. I don't think that they will disagree. I just think that there are some things that, some questions that, that they won't answer.
Right, and I concur with you.
Okay.
The only thing I wanted to make sure, at least from, from, from my perspective, and you heard Dr. Boone say it earlier, using the curveball. The curveball occurred forty-five days ago.
Yeah.
And so, in, one of the things that we said back to Dr. Boone was, can you go back and look at this? Work with, uh, educational planning team and come back and tell us how we can do those very things. The difference with the Maury piece is that curveball just got thrown some months earlier, so they had time to build that in. You're absolutely correct in terms of the community engagement, and that was why Dr. Boone and Dr. Rogers and Mr. Richter have said that they're going to look, come back to us with a process in order to make sure that we have that engagement, cause I agree with you a hundred percent. It just was something that just fell into place as an opportunity that we just didn't know was gonna fall into place. So, I just wanna make sure that there's, there was no intent, and there is no intent to exclude anyone, it's just trying to figure out how do we make it happen in a way that serves the win-win in the window of opportunity that we have.
And the, the only other piece I would add to what everyone has said is the reminder that even as we presented options for boundaries for Lake Taylor High School as a CTE school, we talked about, uh, an associated boundary with it and the rest of the school being school-wide choice, district-wide choice. And so, I don't envision that shifting either in how we approach this, and so that's why we felt it was very important also, not only for the Booker T. community, particularly the current parents and those that are in feeder school, feeder to the school, uh, to understand what that meant, but also to use it as part of our internal and external marketing tool around how do we get people excited now that we are ready to launch this opportunity. So, we saw that, that the planning process, again, around thinking through, again, not to design those academies, because there have been years of work that have been done with that, with the business community, with higher ed, that doesn't get abandoned, nor do we start all over again on that. But there's a place for helping people to learn about those. But then, e- educational planning conversation around, um, how do we make this happen in a community-wide piece? How do we generate the excitement around the options and opportunities for this school? And so, that's what we see as part of this also.
Can I add to that just real quick, cause I think this is a key point? Is that, cause people wonder about the order, why, you know, why Maury first or anything, but the, the fundamental difference between the two is Maury has an existing successful program. What we have learned from Maury is how to do, how it took years to make that a successful program, cause it did. EVMS didn't happen overnight. We all know that. It took a lot of grind and a lot of partnership, a lot of that. We learned lessons in our planning effort that are only going to benefit our community conversation with Booker T. Washington. And that's, for me, that is a critical element here, is that, is that piece.
And I understand what you're saying, and in terms of, you're right, Rome was not built in a day.
Yeah.
And, you know, and with the whole B, uh, BTW piece, inclusion is important.
Yes, ma'am.
People wanna feel like they have some ownership in terms of what's happening in their community.
Yes, ma'am.
The other piece is that, again, Rome was not built in a day, and it takes time to make a quality program. That's a concern. The other piece of the concern that I hear all the time, and I'm sure some of you hear it too, there is a historical legacy that they are concerned about being taken from them. Not in terms of the program, but in terms of the whole legacy of what, what it was all about. So, that's a fear and a concern, and until some of those things are addressed, you're gonna, and we, we want everybody to buy into the program.
Sure.
And certainly, uh, uh, if the community has not bought into the program, certain parts of the community, it's not going to be a smooth transition, and it's gonna get ugly. So, it's just a matter of inclusion and making sure that we address some of their concerns.
And that's why I stated tonight, that we've already started that process and having discussions about what a community involvement piece would look like around this, and, and what that looks like. That's why I stated that this evening.
All right, uh, anything else on that? Mr. Richter, anything else?
No, I, just, just a couple pieces. We continue to collaborate through staff-level meetings, DLT updates, steering committee. Steering committee, we're gonna reengage in May just to update them. We've sent them communications. We anticipate having a lot of community meetings out there in the fall, so, um, and again, it'll more depend on the next six weeks of work that kinda drive that community. So, I just wanna make sure that there's gonna be an estimated draft plan, I mean, comprehensive plan for you for June. Um, that, that addresses order, buildings, magnitude, all that stuff. So, I'm looking forward to delivering that, and it's gonna be a lot of work to get there, but.
All right, well, uh, any, any final questions for Mr. Richter?
Meeting tomorrow night.
Yes.
Maury High School.
Right, for us to, for those who attend, again, we, we listen and we learn, because if you interject in the process and how you're gonna act on it later, so. Again, any school district is around listening and learning and not driving, Tracy and his team will lead the work, the conversations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Boone, let's do a reset here. I know that, uh, Goshen's getting up. I don't know if she's getting up to leave or getting up to come to the table.
I'm going with her.
So, uh, in terms of the CTE plan, um, that we have before us, what, what's, what's the, uh, in terms of timeline, in terms of submission of the application that, that you have?
April thirtieth is that window, so she needs to do, again, this is not the CTE high school plan. This is the, while she's coming to, to the seat. This is the application for, pretty much for Perkins funds, the, the federal funds that support that annual plan. So, that's what Ms. Goshen is here tonight seeking. We, we're in that spring model, you know. At some point, we'll have the special education annual plan at next week's meeting, and then we'll have the Title I plan that will come up. So, we're just in that, that time of the year where.
And before Ms. Goshen goes, because Dr. Boone mentioned, early last week, you probably saw the special education plan on the agenda. But is, we were looking at the, pretty much the meeting is going the way that, uh, I kinda thought it would, especially with the, I knew the interest that the board had in the trauma-informed care. So, next week, we'll have the special education plan up first, so that it can get its, uh, full due and, and attention. So, with that, uh, Ms. Goshen.
Good evening to everyone. As shared with Dr. Boone, the purpose of this very brief presentation will be the overview of the CTE local plan, which addresses, uh, career and technical education throughout the division. So, this is not particularly focused on the CTE high school, but what takes place across our middle and high schools at, as well as the technical center and some other auxiliary centers. When we look at career and technical education, we look at CTE courses, again, throughout the middle schools, K eights, high schools, the technical center, as well as auxiliary centers, and that's the Net Academy, as well as the Madison Career Center. Each of the programs are affiliated with the Career and Technical Student Organization that not only provides enrichment for theory and hands-on learning, but also leadership. That's where our students have an opportunity to compete on the district, uh, state, and national level. And we've done very well this year with many of our students competing now at the state level and advancing to national level, such as our health and medical sciences students. Select CTE components are graduation requirement. We've all heard of the new, uh, and improved the profile of the Virginia graduate. Career and technical education is a large part of that, as you have to have a sequence of CTE in order to graduate. You have certain courses that have now been added for middle and high school, as well as credentialing, that is a requirement for standard diploma. You also take a look at our CTE programs. The federal government requires a certain level benchmark performance for each state. And within each state, every division must meet that requirement. We have met all benchmarks assigned to us throughout the state of Virginia, and we're very happy that has taken place, because we've put a lot of instructional adjustments and changes, so that our students can continue to master the content. Briefly looking at enrollment over the years, we currently have eleven thousand four hundred and thirteen students who take CTE courses, and that's only for first semester of this year. In the middle school, they started a whole new group of students in February. We'll add numbers to that by the end of June. When you look at the changes in enrollment, it's not because of decline. Some of our courses that have come on board require more hours, so they have to be double-blocked. And so, you see less section being offered, so instead of one hundred and forty hours to complete something, you have to take two hundred and eighty hours, and that's some of the courses, like your culinary or your health and medical sciences and things of that nature. When we look at industry credentials, all of our programs have an industry credential assigned. That could be licensure, whether it's the NCLEX for nursing, that could be cosmetology. You could take an assessment, you can do a variety of different things. Our numbers have increased over the years, beginning with twenty thirteen, we started before that, but up to twenty sixteen, seventeen, which would be spring of last year, our students earned three thousand four hundred and eighteen credentials. For this year, we will begin spring testing the last week in April and the first two weeks in May. We really try to move ahead of the SOL, uh, SOL testing, so that there is not a conflict. The only thing we've run aligned with would be the AP testing that takes place at the secondary level. And a large component of career and technical education is taking the theory, the lab learning, and putting it together to make those connecting the learning to the real world. We have several different forms of work-based learning available to middle and high school students. At the high school level, you have all of the complements. At the middle school, you really focus on service learning and job shadowing, and that is done normally through the virtual, uh, component, or they will go visit sites. Once you get to high school, you have an opportunity for internships. There's mentorship on both levels. Your clinical experiences are basically for your health and medical sciences. Cooperative education or your business and, uh, marketing courses. Your internships can be paid and non-paid, and we've added one this year with registered youth apprenticeship, which is a large undertaking that we can celebrate, because that's in collaboration with the Virginia Department of Labor and Industry. So, students who go into apprenticeship, they're going to work. They are, they've been hired by an employer, and they are doing apprenticeship hours that not only give them credit for high school, payment for job, but it is transferable to adult apprenticeship. So, whatever they do in high school now transitions over. Right now, we are working with, um, Trades and Industrial. The city of Norfolk has graciously agreed to be an apprenticeship site. We're looking to do some things internal with the city of Norfolk, as well as Norfolk Public Schools, and a host of other places. Another apprenticeship that's coming on board is the Virginia Restaurant Association in collaboration with our programs throughout the high schools, as well as TCC would look to be apprenticeship sites throughout various restaurants for our students. If you take a look at how we will move forward in, in the fall, we will expand CTE dual enrollment options. Right now, it's only in the information technology area. It will move forward to culinary. We will move on the next school year to STEM with mechatronics and education. Education will be early childhood education, and then we'll try to grow out for Virginia teachers for tomorrow. Culinary is in place with Tywater, Tyewater Community College. The STEM mechatronics will also be with TCC. That will have to come on board in fall of twenty nineteen due to the various aspects of that, and then education, we can start this fall. Again, I just spoke about the registered apprenticeship program with the Department of Labor. Additional courses will include cybersecurity. The fundamentals of cybersecurity will go across all high schools. And then each high school or the technical center or the CTE high school will take on higher-level specialty aspect. Advanced placement computer science will begin this fall. Our, our students will pilot AP computer science principles testing next month. Elementary activities will include expansion of career awareness. Our elementary schools at this time do not have CTE courses, they have CTE activities. For this summer, our elementary teachers, outside of the DODIA grant, will be trained in code VA, so we can push the coding down. Over the last school year, the Congress has made funding available for that to take place. In our middle schools, we will redesign that. We would like to create a stronger pipeline of students moving up through the high schools, but making sure they are, we're meeting the needs of the middle school student. We will introduce more STEM, more coding, but more importantly, give them some entrepreneur and leadership options that they do not have at this time. Uh, I would say about two or three weeks ago, we received notification for the State Department of Education that all schools in Virginia will now have to offer a career investigations class at the middle school level. Career investigations could be done in various formats, and all divisions are working together to see how that will begin in fall of twenty eighteen. The other thing we're moving forward with, with national and/or state accreditation or recertification for many of our CTE programs. Looking at our support and advocacy, on a financial level for federal, we have Perkins. And Perkins covers grades seven through twelve only. It does not cover K or pre-K through six. Perkins funding is the plan that you had an opportunity to review earlier. At the current time, it is based on student enrollment, and the federal government has not issued an allotment to the state, so we do not have a defined amount of how much we will have for next year. And so, all divisions within the state of Virginia are currently using last year's budget in order to build out this plan. We have, in addition to Perkins, state funding for different grants. That is based on our enrollment of students between the ages of five and seventeen, within a certain socioeconomic band. We have local operating budget, which is provided by the great folks here and the great folks of the city of Norfolk. That covers most of the things that the grants will not do. That helps us with our pre-K through six CTE. That covers all of our teaching staff, because Perkins does not cover our teaching staff, because after a three-year period, you have to rotate them, rotate them off. And that keeps divisions in a very difficult situation, when year to year, you're not sure how much you will get if you're going to get something. Also, with the operating budget, it allows us to pick up things such as infrastructure, as well as equipment that Perkins will not cover. Perkins does not cover consumables, so if there's ink or different things that students have to use, the three-D printers, they cover, but the, uh, supplies for the three-D printers do not. Anything that changes shape or form, Perkins does not cover. Business and partnership support has been amazing. It fills in those gaps. For example, Virginia Ship Repair, if you need wood or metal or things of that nature for welding, a lot of places come in and they help us. Centerra has been wonderful with helping out for a lot of things, and the IT business community has just been amazing. We continue to have a great advisory council, and because we have such great business partners that are very vested in what we're doing, it has spun off to various subgroups. For example, we have the CTE Advisory Council, but as of last November, we brought on board the IT Business Academy Council, that twelve different information technology businesses come together throughout the year to look specifically at that. We also have one that looks specifically at health and medical sciences. It allows us to have that expertise that drills down into what's exactly needed within those particular career clusters. The next thing is our CTE local plan that you've had an opportunity to review, and I want to spend this time of any questions that you may have, based on what. based on what you've had an opportunity to see. One caveat that I have is on certain pages you see stamped "draft." That's because we have not received our allocation for this year, so the budget was built based on last year. Once they prepare the allocations and it's sent to all school divisions, the State Department will ask schools to go back and do an amendment, and we will do so and then submit it to them. Outside of that, the only other page that you see that has "draft" will be on a page that has some student data. That's because we use September 30th numbers, as we always do. And if March 30th student data has been updated prior to plans of middle, we just go back and we add those numbers. There's very little adjustment that is done. Outside of that, this plan was developed. It's a labor of love that we have an opportunity for students, parents, educators, and business individuals to come together at various points throughout the year and bring forth what they believe should be in the plan. And what we do is, once the plan is done, it's set back out or made available for everyone to review. And then they provide input, so they're on the beginning and the middle, and then they are part of the evaluation. Once this plan is reviewed by you, it goes to Tidewater Community College where they review it and they sign off, and then our business partners will do the same.
Before we go on to the plan itself, can we just circle back to the presentation? Because I have one question and one comment.
Okay.
Go for it.
What are the difference between industry credentials and industry certifications?
They're the same. Industry credentials happens to be the catch-all for industry certifications. So when you think of industry credentials, you're speaking of licensure, assessments, and things of that nature. So for example, if a student does a Microsoft Word, that's considered an industry certification. If they go on and take the national licensure for nursing, that's a license. And so to keep from having to break them all out, they're lumped under credentials.
And the only comment I want to make is, I don't want to get away from this number, but with, from 2014 to 2017, there's been an increase in over 60% in the number of industry credentials. That, three years, that's something to be very, very proud of, and we need to trumpet that tremendously. Because that's a, that's a huge number.
What we did was, we took the opportunity to align it the same way we approach SOLs and other core academics, that the students come in in September, and there's pre-testing done. And we utilize that data to go and work with schools so they have a clear understanding of the areas of needed growth and areas of strength. Then we match the blueprints with what is being taught, the activities. We've trained the teachers based on that. But then we also allow them to practice tests with students throughout and their benchmarks throughout. And that has helped the teachers and the students to embrace the seriousness of purpose. But the great thing is, when it became a graduation requirement, it changed the playing field for a lot. But the wonderful part about that, before it became the requirement, our students and teachers had gotten on board. So the requirement was only last year. But if you notice, we started to improve before that, and we're looking forward to more improvement.
Gabriel?
I agree with what Dr. Robinson just mentioned with the increase in the number of credentials because that can also translate to dollars that the child, the student, is able to earn once they exit. Going forward with our CTE high school and the program that's going to be associated with it, in presentations to come, I think it would be kind of helpful to break down the credentialing per the four categories that we have.
Pathways to cluster academies.
So we can start looking at how each of the pathways are translating into the credentials and the license.
If I could recommend, we just put it by the, right, by the pathway or the sequence because not everything will be at the CTE high school. There still, as this presentation has said, there's still CTE at all of the high schools. So I think we'd be better to do it by the career technical strands.
Academies.
Various academies, even those that are at the Conference of High Schools.
Ms. Bassin?
So speaking, speaking of which, so this, this plan does not reflect the CTE high school.
The CTE, this particular plan reflects the entire division, and the CTE high school is a component.
Is a component, okay. Well then, so...
If I could, Ms. Bassin, that's why I remember during the budget work sessions, I was saying, we weren't starting with zero when the question was asked, you know, where's the money in there? So it's how we align the funds with the pathways and the courses.
Right, I just wanted to be sure of this plan as it relates to Perkins, as it relates to...
One example of that is, if you see in the budget, it talks about funding for vouchers and industry credentials payments. Each test costs, some cost $5, some cost up to $300. That funding would be able to be used at all high schools and including the CTE high school.
All right, great. And then, so, you know, and I thought I, I got this since we were talking about the budget, with the decrease in, in our operating budget. So is that impacted by the decrease in the VRS and then the decrease in Perkins?
Okay, Perkins is completely separate.
Yeah, that's separate. But I mean, how does that impact our operating?
How does Perkins impact the operating budget?
Yeah, because I think if I heard you correctly earlier, some of the positions, well, maybe I misunderstood.
No, I think what she was saying is that Perkins, most of the staffing for CTE is in the operating budget.
Right.
That's currently in the operating budget. So you recall, at one of the work sessions, the question was raised, why we're seeing such a jump in the state dollars for that? And that's because we had had an increase in enrollment in CTE courses, even though our other enrollment had declined, we had an increase. So that's where that came from. What Ms. Goshen is referencing is that any new staff that we put into the Perkins grant can only stay there three years. And then they move, have to move into the operating budget or we have to find another source for them or eliminate the program, which we have not been doing. That's where we reprogram. So it's simply that staff can only stay there for three years. Some of our other grants, staff can stay there a lot longer. Title I, Title II, Title VI for special ed, staff don't have a limitation of how long they can stay there. But with Perkins, there is that three-year requirement. And then we, the idea is to plan for them to no longer be on the Perkins grant.
And then to be part of, okay, the operating, okay.
And then specifically with Perkins, it is to supplement the operational budget and not to surplan.
Not to surplan, okay. All right, and I have a couple of questions within the plan. Is that okay to address? Okay. Find where I am. So over, and this is over the last many years, have we ever, there hasn't been any, like, corrective action or anything that we've ever had to take in terms of meeting requirements?
Not in the last three years, no.
Not in the last three years, okay. And, let's see. On Section E, or Schedule Four, Page Eight, there is, let me get to that page, I just switched. So it has the services provided and by special populations. Why, well, I have one question. Why is college counseling not listed? I was just curious about that. I know this form is developed by the state, but I was just curious if there was a rationale. And then the second part of that is, can you explain our plan to provide our students with supplemental social growth activities, high-interest reading materials for struggling readers, and work-study programs? That those weren't checked off? And I was just curious if we, if there was a rationale for that.
Okay, in terms of the plan, the template is the federal government's template, and it's given to us. When we look at checking the boxes, we remember looking at the supplement of what we're doing. And because we do a great job with the operating budget using that to do high-interest reading materials and social growth activities, that's part of the operating budget. What we have checked here is what we're going to do on top of that. And so they wouldn't allow us to take it, take Perkins money and surplant what we're already doing. But they will allow us to go above.
Okay.
And so at the bottom here...
Addition to.
In addition to, okay, well, that makes, that makes more sense.
If we can indicate whether or not any non-federal funds will be used to support students, at the very bottom, that allows us to check there. And that gives them the understanding that if we're not checking something here, there's some non-federal funds that may be going towards that.
And then that explains my question around the college piece. Okay. That was, that was it. Now that you explained that to me, that took care of a couple of other questions.
Any, anyone else?
I just had a couple of questions. Well, one in terms of the cluster. And I was just wondering, looking at our programs, why is it we did not, or could we look at the Arts AV, Technology and Communication cluster? Because I don't see that that is one that's included in the plan.
Okay. There are 16 clusters that are offered throughout the National Career Cluster Framework. We offer all clusters with the exception of agriculture. So the AV is included, but sometimes the plan, if it's on Page Nine, it may not spell it out. AV may come under information technology, or AV may come under technology education or STEM. And so the particular page that you're looking at may be some things. They ask you, what have you done to look at plans of action for the past?
Uh-huh. Previously, yeah.
So we offer all clusters with the exception of agriculture.
Okay. Then that was one question. The other one was, and I just didn't, probably didn't understand, CTE for the system is from seven to 12.
CTE for the, from the system, we're allowed, we're allowed pre-K through 12.
Okay, that's, that's what I was...
That's required by, we operate under the Code of Virginia, just like the rest of... However, Perkins only covers grades seven through 12.
I thought Perkins covered five through 17.
No, seven through 12. Grades seven through 12.
Okay. So why did the, okay, I guess I read it wrong then because when I looked at the grant, I thought it said Perkins covers Harvard's disadvantage from five through 17.
We get various different forms of grants, and sometimes that comes in called categorical or other grants. And that's the grades, that's ages five through 17 that are below the poverty line or within. When you look at Perkins, they're looking at grade level specific. So that's grades seven through 12. But we have other categorical funds that come down at the same time that allows you to cover the other ones.
So, and I know one of the things it says that there is, in the seventh grade, we actually do like an individual plan? Do we actually do that for each seventh grader? Is it trans, so that plan comes with them when they go to the high schools?
Yes, it begins in grade seven. The academic career plan begins in grade seven, and it moves with them to high school. It's reviewed grade nine and grade 11, and that's through our school counseling department.
And who pays for the dual enrollment?
Dual enrollment is paid for in various different ways, and I'm going to ask Dr. Boone to help me with that because they're different components. We wrote into our plan to assist us with paying dual enrollment for special population students. And so those are students who are low socioeconomic, English language learners, students who are actual single parents, not of single parents, of single parents. And they allow us to pay for that. But then we also have a collaboration with Mr. Coleman's office to pay for some students. So dual enrollment, and Perkins will pay for CTE dual enrollment courses, your STEM, your computer information system, and things of that nature. If a student is taking English or other core content, then Mr. Coleman's office, or the secondary office, pays for that.
And that money is primarily operating budget.
That's built into our operating budget, dual enrollment.
So many of our, looking at the Perkins now, many of our disadvantaged students are enrolled in the dual enrollment program?
Well, right now, we only have one for career and technical education, but in September, we will expand that to additional ones. And more students are now taking the courses now that they are available. And we will also have CTE students taking advanced placement CTE courses on which the testing will be paid for, for them.
Anyone else? Anything else you'd like to add, Dr. Boone, on this?
I want to check with Ms. Goshen, and we do need board action on this. Yes.
Motion to approve the presented career technical education plan.
All right, I have a...
A second?
Motion from Dr. Gabriel, seconded by Mrs. Bassin. Any further discussion or questions on the, on the plan or the action that we are proposed to take? All right, hearing done, Mr. Butts, if you would call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goshen.
All right, so we have had a robust work session. I know we had also matters of the board. We also need to do a quick closed session. Any objection to deferring the matters of the board to next week?
No objection.
So with that, any, any further questions or comments in terms of what we've discussed today, at today's work session, from it planning to the trauma-informed care report, Acari High School, Booker T., anything that we've covered today that anyone would like to see further discussion next week or have any remaining questions that we can provide to the administration to get back to us in the future? Any other item right now pressing for this time? All right, so hearing done, let's adjourn this work session and take a five-minute break, and we can get to our...
Do we have to do a motion for...
Yeah, we're ready to come to that. Adjourn the work session, take a five-minute break, and prepare to go into closed session. So in that regard, to have a motion for us to enter into closed executive session.
I make the motion, we enter into closed, into closed executive session.
You have a second?
A second.
All right, moved by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Bassin. Mr. Butts, if you call the roll, please. Or read the motion, I'm sorry. Call the roll, read the motion, please.
Move that the members of the school board, the superintendent, and council go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools. The substance of this section of the motion concerns the discipline of employees pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. Consultation of legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal counsel by counsel, I'm sorry, legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The substance of this section of the motion refers to advice of counsel or briefing of staff members regarding the matter set out in subsection A and the school board's legal relation to the Norfolk Education Foundation. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
All right. All right, I've got 7:33. If we can get together by 7:40.
Mr. Cloud, been here two hours.
I know, take our action and get on.